Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Committee of the Whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 health and safety requirements and by order of the governor, but happy to announce that this is the last of this type of format that us council members will be meeting in. So next time you see us at Committee of the Whole, we will be in person up on the diash. So looking very, very forward to that. Welcome to any of you that are watching on Facebook, City of Kent, on the Kent TV 21 channel, on our YouTube Kent TV 21 channel, and then anyone that is calling in to listen this afternoon. We will get started with our agenda, and first up is the roll call. So can we please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Yes.
Councilmember Michaux?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Kim. Next up is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff or council?
None from staff this afternoon.
All right, we will move on then to department presentations, and we have quite a few. The first one is payment of bills. That comes to us through email. So we will go ahead and move that on to the consent calendar and then move on to the next item, which is the ordinance to address the keeping of roosters in the city. And so Sam, I believe you're going to start us off today. Welcome.
Yes, I am. Thank you, and hello, councilmembers. Good afternoon. I'm excited today to be presenting some options on rooster ordinance. If you can remember, we discussed this briefly about a month ago, and we've gone back and done a little bit more public outreach and want to present to you a few different options as well as what we found out from our public outreach. So I should be sharing my screen now with the PowerPoint slide. Again, my name's Sam Alcorn. I'm a planner here with the City of Kent, and I'm presenting on some code amendment options for addressing roosters in the City of Kent. So this all originated with some noise nuisance complaints we've heard from some residents here in the City of Kent, as well as our code enforcement officers, that there are periodic complaints about frequent coin of roosters. We went back through our records and found out, you know, over the past five years, there's about 20 to 30 noise complaints per year. And as you kind of imagine, those are in the, right now, in the summertime when it's light out pretty early and folks have their windows open and hear a little bit more of the rooster noise. And specifically, our code enforcement officers have let us know that they're having a bit of a difficult time enforcing the code as it's currently written. And so that existing code allows a variety of domestic fowl on a lot. There's limitations based on your lot size. However, it doesn't specifically call out roosters, but you can have any duck, goose, swan, chicken, or other fowl of the same size. But what is a public nuisance in our noise ordinances actually are keeping animals that crow frequently. And so you can read that as roosters. And how code enforcement has a problem with this is that to be able to issue citation, they need evidence. And so they would need to record the rooster crowing at the crack of dawn and also prove that it's habitual. And so that in itself is a bit of a difficult one for code enforcement officers to address any noise nuisances caused by roosters. And so I went in and actually took a look at how other cities handle roosters. And as you can kind of see, a majority of them do ban roosters, but there are a couple that have a variety of approaches. So you can see that Bellevue and Sea Tech kind of address it the same way that we do, that you can have a limited number of foul per lot, and it doesn't really matter what they are. You can see that Des Moines and, let's see here, Federal Way take a little bit of different approach and only allow roosters in kind of large lot zones or more like rural or agricultural zones. But other than that, the majority of cities in our region do explicitly ban roosters. Last session, when we talked about this, people were a little bit curious, like, how loud is a rooster? How far does that noise carry? And so I did a little bit of research here. I'm not like an expert here at decimal levels, but I found this neat chart from the CDC that puts decimal levels in a bit of a category, and I believe it's on an exponential scale. And so as you go up, it gets louder by a multiple of 10. And so I found a study where they estimated rooster crowing to be at 100 decibels, sorry, 100 decibels measured at three feet distance. And so that's comparable to some other noises you would hear around your neighborhood. But I think what the main difference is here is that the roosters crowing are at the crack of dawn, while all the rest of these noises would be kind of during normal hours that aren't going to wake up or disturb your neighbors. So it was actually before our last meeting about roosters last month, we collected a number of public comments, and I've categorized those into whether they supported banning a rooster, supported limiting rooster ownership, or flat out opposed the ban. And as you can kind of see, it's a bit evenly split. I think what's notable here is that three of the public comments opposing the ban were from outside of the City of Kent. These are, you know, rooster rehoming agencies that expressed some concern on what rooster banning Kent might affect their business. Otherwise, yeah, again, a bit of a spread on who supported banning roosters, who wanted to limit roosters, or who opposed them. And really, if you get down there and read all the public comments, a lot of the ones that are limiting or in support of limiting also kind of have the opinion of like taking no action would be preferred and wanted really to not have the roosters bothered, but thought there is a more sensible approach to just a flat out ban. And I believe all of these public comments have been provided to you in your packet. So on top of that, actually, we went a little further here and did a public outreach on a social media survey. And so we had us, is actually Bailey Stover on his way out created an excellent video and distributed it among several social media platforms to garner some attention and request social media users in Kent to take a quick survey that reviewed some people's thoughts on roosters. And so that survey was up for a two-week period for the first two weeks of June, and we actually got 450 total respondents, which was pretty impressive. But of those, we actually did have a question in our surveys to ask if or where in Kent did you live, or if you live in Kent. And of that, 93 of those respondents said that they didn't live in Kent. And so I went in and excluded their answers, but I have the full survey results and can provide those to you if you like. And so now I'm going to go into question-by-question breakdown of the different answers to our survey questions. So just in general, I want to let you know that there's a lot of yes/no questions here, and yes is always going to be an orange, and blue is always going to mean no. So again, blue is no, orange is yes. And so we're curious if people heard roosters and how frequently they hear roosters. So the majority of people do hear roosters, and most of that is either one or multiple times a day. And interesting, we next wanted to know if it was disruptive or how people felt about it. Most people thought that it was not disruptive or didn't really have an opinion. And of those people who had feelings on rooster noise, about a third of them felt good about it. They liked rooster noise. About a third of them didn't feel good about it at all. And that's 97 people who really felt bad about hearing roosters on the day-to-day, as well as a pretty, a third of people didn't really care. So I thought those are all very interesting results. And next, we asked all these survey respondents if they own a rooster. And actually, surprisingly enough, the vast majority don't own roosters, 86%. And of those who do own roosters, the majority was just one or two. And then there's only about a quarter that had three or more. And again, of those respondents of how many roosters you own, this was, you know, three or more was 13 people. And so, you know, not a ton. So I was actually a little curious of like why people get roosters or how do they get them? And so it's really a pretty variety of reasons. People, you know, purchase them intentionally, adopt them, you know, eggs hatch, and you either get a rooster or a chicken. And so sometimes you just get a rooster. And then purposes for rooster ownership are to hatch your own chicks, to fertilize eggs, and to protect ends. And so most people want roosters to protect their ends. And then next, we also wanted to know if people own chickens, if that had any implications here. And again, not a lot of people responded that they own chickens, and those that did own chickens, again, it's a variety, kind of split down the middle of, you know, people own a variety of number of those chickens. Finally, we reached it in what kind of neighborhood people lived in, and that would kind of give a bearing on if these were folks who lived more in rural agricultural areas, large lot areas, or a certain part of the city. And as you can see, most folks are living in, or most respondents lived in what they would describe as neighborhood, and very few said rural or agricultural. And then most respondents live up on the east till, but with a bit of a split between west till and valley for the remainder of the respondents. And then actually, most people didn't know how large their lot was, which I found kind of interesting. But again, a bit of a split on lot size of the respondents. And then kind of to the meat of what we're trying to find out is how should Kent approach regulating roosters? One, should Kent ban rooster ownership? Two, should Kent allow roosters only in agricultural rural zones, kind of like we saw in Federal Way? Or should Kent limit rooster ownership to one per lot? And really, across the board here, people didn't think that any action should be taken or that Kent should be changing how they're regulating roosters. However, there is a sizable percentage that does say that for each of these questions that some regulation would be okay. And as you see, there was the smaller percentage supported banning rooster ownership and a larger percentage thought limiting rooster ownership to one lot would be good. But again, across the board here, the majority of our survey respondents were advocating for no action. So just to kind of go back and give some conclusions on all those survey results. First, I think it's notable to point out that this survey is not randomized, and so it's not that any resident of Kent had an equal opportunity to get picked to share their opinion, and then we can, and that would allow us to kind of generalize more accurately people's feelings on roosters. Rather, this survey was prone to what's called like self-selection bias. It's the sampling bias where those who are more opinionated are going to be the ones clicking on that survey and answering the questions. And so it self-attracts people that have opinions on roosters. And so I think rather than this being a generalizable study to all of Kent residents, it's rather the thoughts of about 350 people who clicked on this ad on Facebook and are interested in roosters. That being said, a majority of these survey respondents do hear roosters but aren't bothered by the noise. Again, a majority of these respondents do not own roosters or chickens. A majority of these respondents described where they live as a neighborhood, and also a majority do not support any city action on regulating rooster ownership. However, there is a bit of support to limiting roosters rather than banning them. And so just as a bit of a balance of showing what the survey results and written comments are, you can see that in the survey results here, most folks were of the opinion to not ban with a split between, you know, the other options that we presented, while with the written comments, we're actually relatively not too many. I think it was about 15 to 20 folks that submitted written comments, or about evenly split on what was shown there. And so as a conclusion, survey results show a majority oppose a ban or any limitations. And you can see the numbers under there and the percentages. Letter comments were evenly split when excluded. And we also excluded the people who wrote in from outside of Kent there. And it's something that shouldn't be overlooked. Rooster noise does still disturb some residences. So that's again, 20 to 30 complaints per year, a lot of times in summer, and likely not everyone is filing complaints. And then 97 people who filled out our survey rated rooster noise as bad. And then also to be noted that most cities in the Tijuana area do ban roosters. So I just wanted to share all of those conclusions that I found from our survey and research. So in your packet here, we've provided three different ordinances as potential options to amend the keeping of animals and then that rooster code. And so the first is to ban roosters in all zones. The second is to ban roosters in all zones except for more of the large lot zones, SR1 and Ag zones, or to only have one rooster permitted per lot. And option number four is actually to not take any action and leave the code unchanged and thus what staff has recommended today. And so this is consistent with the public opinion that I found was gathered during our research and during the public comments and during the written comments. And frequent and habitual crowing would still be a public nuisance as written in code, and some of these complaints could be handled more on a case-by-case basis, kind of a more neighborly fashion. And so with that said, I'm curious if y'all have any questions for me today.
Sam, a lot of information. Thank you so much. Lot of work went into gathering that data. I am going to start with hands raised first. So Councilmember Thomas, followed by Boyce, followed by Larmour, and then Core. So Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would go with option four. I don't think the results that we saw that Sam, by the way, Sam, really good work on that. So I want to thank you first for that. But I don't think you could really draw any conclusions that would indicate a good decision one way or another. So I'm going back to the original complaint by the lady who had all those next to her, and I think she's got a legitimate claim that she could bring in and use our current codes to make a complaint. So I'm going for option four as my first indication unless, well, let's see what Bill says and others.
Sam, do you mind quickly too, before we move on? Go back to that previous slide, and then that way we have all the options up. So when we're referring to options, perfect, then we can go back to that. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Sam, you guys did an excellent job for going out, you know, I mean, trying to get data. And you know, there's lots of ways of doing it, but you did take a stab at trying to collect some data, try to hear what our people in the city are saying. I didn't take the survey. I don't own a rooster, but I do have a rooster across from my street that crows every once in a while, and I'm a good old country boy from North Carolina, and I'm used to that. So I'm okay with it. You know, I, you know, the data, pretty much what the data, I think Councilmember Thomas was saying the same thing, the data tells me is to go with option four. We went out there and got some information. We probably could have spanned and got more information, but I'm not a standardist, but I think, you know, based on what we able to see, I think option four is probably the direction I would go. Similar to what Councilmember Thomas said, that, you know, I'd like to see from enforcement area, we need to make sure that people who are outside the code, we need to make sure they understand how to reach out for help, and we need to make sure that we are enforcing the code, right? I think we probably could do, my own personal opinion, we probably could do a better job at that. So I'd like to see us communicate on what is the policy, and if the people are not following it, how you go about, you know, turn that in so we can follow up and enforce if people is outside the boundary. So with that said, option four would be the direction I would go. Once again, Sam, your team did a good job. I like your presentation, and thank you for taking the time to reach out to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And I think I said Councilmember Larmour, but Councilmember Core, you are actually up next.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam, so much for your presentation, and thank you for taking all the time to, you know, do public outreach and give this information to us. I agree with Councilmembers Boyce and Thomas. I'd go with option four because, I mean, that's the results we got from our community, and I, we have a history of being a rural community, a farming community. I know we're changing, but I think just banning roosters does not make sense for me. So, and I've mentioned it before, my neighbors have them, and I rarely hear them, so they don't bother me much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. And yeah, Sam, thank you for a great presentation. You specifically answered my question about exactly how loud they are, so I'm very impressed you found that chart. I was kind of expecting that to be a question that would be difficult to answer, so that was really helpful. Couple of questions and then a comment. So my first question is, on the survey results, the folks that answered that they lived in neighborhoods, or I guess the question is, of those that do want, do we know or was there a cross-section of data of how many own roosters in what they would call neighborhoods? Or do we feel like the respondents that were answering that they lived in neighborhoods didn't necessarily own roosters? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. I think I could find that out for you, but in general, it seems that most of the respondents did say they lived in neighborhoods, and then again, most of the respondents said that they didn't own roosters or chickens. And so if you kind of extrapolate that a little bit, that could tell you something. But what I've found out from the Kent Code Enforcement is that the rooster complaints actually come from all over the city. There's not like a particular concentration, and they're pretty evenly spread. And so I think it could be fair to say that rooster ownership is evenly spread throughout the city.
Okay, so we can't, okay, so it's fair to say that there's some rooster ownership in neighborhoods, there's some in the more rural zoning codes that we're looking at. And then do we know for SR1 and Ag zones, how much land or what percent of land is that left in Kent? I mean, is it 10%, 20%?
That's a great question. It's actually the minority of land use percentages or land, sorry, zoning percentages. There's only like two small agricultural zones that are just to the south of downtown, and then some of the SR1 zones are just on kind of like the periphery, kind of near the city's borders. And so I think the intent there was to have a bit of a fading out of densities as you approach these boundaries. And so that's mostly where you would find that zoning, but I'd be happy to share a zoning map with you if you'd like to view it.
No, I think that answers my question. So I'm having a hard time ignoring the fact that there are 20 to 30 noise complaints a year, and that one of, you know, one of the letters in favor of a ban was from our own code enforcement officer. So this isn't a problem. It's a problem I had heard about in conversations with code enforcement before this even came before council. So I think I'm coming down on a zone restriction, I think would be my first choice, simply because I'm afraid the habitual, frequent habitual crowing, we know is really, really hard to even enforce. So even if somebody were to come forward with a complaint, it's that whole issue of having to actually catch the evidence at the crack of dawn. So I'm just, I think I'm coming down in favor of a ban except for zones where there's less density.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Just so everyone knows, I'm keeping track. I'm writing stuff down, so.
What's asked of Councilmember Larmour was one, two, three, and I didn't get that.
I put you Dennis, too.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you. I am going to agree with Councilmember Thomas, Boyce, and Core. I do agree that that seems like a lot of complaints, but I'm guessing that there are also a lot of complaints about barking dogs, and we would never entertain a motion to change an ordinance about owning dogs. And so I just see it similar to that. So I'm going to go with option four.
Thank you, Councilmember Michaux. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will note that they don't always wait until the crack of dawn. I have one, and I live in a neighborhood near me that it has been four o'clock in the morning, but that's very rare that I actually hear the rooster. I think people in the agricultural and the agricultural zones, we received a letter from a guy who had goats and other things, and then the egg zones, you are, I would expect that you would have livestock as well as produce. But with the number of complaints we got, I would either go with not changing the ban or limiting it within only certain areas, as in the neighborhoods.
You got to choose, Councilmember Fincher. You can't be.
If I, well, no, I'm giving you my others. As for my first choice is going to be not to ban, not to change it, because most people seem like they are okay with the way it is.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fincher. All right, I still see some hands up, so I'm going to circle back around if you still want to make any comments or. Councilmember Thomas, did you want to add anything?
Well, just something simple, Madam President. I was going to mow the lawn today, and as I was walking out, I heard my neighbor across the streets, the rooster went off. And this is like, I don't know, 11 o'clock. So it's not, Brendan's right, roosters don't always go at early in the morning. So, and I think I told you guys the last time we brought the subject up, I have more problem with the noise from this loud goat, and that just drives me crazy. But as far as we're talking about roosters, I think we should just leave it alone. I have another neighbor down the street the other way, and they've got chickens and roosters, and we get nice eggs delivered to our mailbox or on top of it. So it's kind of nice. I have no problem with this, the way it is. I just think that we can handle it differently, like Bill said, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Boyce.
What are the comments? Maybe Councilmember Thomas, you might get some goat cheese delivered to you one day too. With that said, I'm just curious, I know Councilmember Larmour went with two. What problem would that solve? I'm just curious. It would be hard for me to interpret the data to say if you go with two, will you really be solving the problem? I'm just curious, Sam, if you can shed some light on that.
Yeah, so as I was mentioning before, these SR1 and agricultural zones are more along the city's boundaries, and so not within the denser neighborhoods or where there's more folks living. And so on top of that, these lots are also much bigger, and so it gives a bit more distance between your neighbors. And so I think we presented that option first because we saw other cities pursued it as an option, but also that it could limit the amount of land area and properties that would be able to own a rooster and then have roosters more in a setting where there's larger lots and more of a rural or agricultural field to them rather than like a neighborhood or suburban field.
But at the end of the day, your data doesn't tell me that that will solve a problem though. Would you agree with that?
I think I would agree with that. I think the data tells us that most people don't have a problem with roosters or how things are being done right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
You know, also, there is the question of how, you know, sometimes you don't know if you have a female or a male chicken. So if it does turn out to be a rooster, or for the people who currently have roosters, how would they dispose of those? Is it just get rid of it and they're gone? Or breakfast, lunch, or dinner, as Councilmember Thomas just mentioned, you know? So that, and for some people, I believe it is a matter of income that they are raising them as part of their income. And the good thing about having your chickens that you can have without the roosters is that you do get fresh eggs. And as we are trying to, as I hope we are trying to become a healthier neighborhood, that's important to be able to know where your food is coming from, how it's been prepared, whether it be the chicken or the egg.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Core.
Thank you. And as Councilmember Fincher just mentioned, my other concern is what are those owners going to do with those roosters? what are those owners going to do with those roosters? That's, that's kind of like, you know, are they going to just kill them, ban, abandon them in the middle of the road? I mean, it's sort of like, I mean, how, how would you even, you know, take care of that? And that's, that's a big concern to me as, you know, just, just kind of looking at it from, you know, I mean, perspective.
Good point.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. So everyone has had a chance to speak. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add or have any questions or comments?
Council President, we didn't hear of your thoughts around this here.
I have to agree. I prefer option four. I think, you know, the data goes that way. If you look at the comments, a majority of the people don't have an issue. I think some of the people that said they would be okay banning them in different zones also said they didn't have an issue if we took no action this evening. So, you know, and then I think it's, Councilmember Boyce, you also mentioned it. It's just making sure that those people that do have issues, we're following up with those people and helping them to, you know, solve whatever problem they're having in their neighborhood. Councilmember Thomas.
One last point. I was just thinking about what Councilmember Larmour was talking about. When you think about it, 20 to 30 complaints over a six-month period of a city of 120, 130,000, I don't think that's too many complaints.
Councilmember Fincher.
Just going to mention also, just because some of the letters and all that we received reference cockfighting, that the main issue here is the noise that's being caused. So this is not an issue of cockfighting where there are already laws on the books to cover that. And that is illegal today and it was illegal last week and is still illegal. Different issue.
Good point, Councilmember Fincher. Thank you. Councilmember Larmour. Oh, you're muted.
So obviously it looks like we're going to be taking no action tonight, but I do have a question. Is there some way to tighten up the code language? Knowing that this, when, when there is frequent habitual crowing, it is still almost impossible to enforce. Is there some way to alter the language to make it enforceable, more enforceable for officers?
Do we know what the law say today? I mean, I don't know what it said today that.
Yeah, you had that on a slide and she found that.
Yeah. So on the slide in front of you now is the, the wording of what the code is right now. I think the options that were presented were all of the, the potential options that we've seen from other cities and what we could think up of, of how to address rooster noise in the city of Kent. And so I think as it's written now, it's, we can limit it by the square footage of the lot. And so I think that is a limitation on the number of roosters you can have potentially. And then if there is frequent habitual crowing, either the code enforcement officer or the neighbor could record evidence and present that and would be able to have some action.
Okay. So the neighbor can record it too. It doesn't have to be our.
That's correct.
Okay.
I've got Erin and Pat who kind of want to jump in. Kurt's got his hand raised too. So, do you want to, Erin, do you want to go first and add anything to that question?
Sure. Good evening, Councilmembers. I just wanted to chime in on the question of tightening up the language. I think any slight wording changes we make here, in my opinion, wouldn't really change the, the enforcement difficulty. The difficulty is that we need, we need evidence. And the code enforcement officers, even with other issues that they're enforcing, they're, they're having to collect photo evidence. But when the nuisance is a noise, then collecting evidence is typically a video. And that's the, that's the crux of the problem. I did want to clarify that while a neighbor could collect a video, there is an issue with that typically being admissible to court because it has to be time and date stamped. And we've had, in my understanding, issues in the past with neighbors knowing how to time and date stamp their, their videos. And then secondarily, they have to be willing to testify in court to basically validate that that was their video and that they took it. And it's, it's hard to also pinpoint location in a video. So it's just, it's just tricky all around to enforce noise. I would just put it that way. So enforcing presence of a rooster was seen as, as something that would be easier. But of course, as now we've seen all of the public feedback, I, I believe that police feels a little differently now after they've heard all the public feedback. And I, I believe from what I've heard, they're okay with no action and just dealing with this case by case as it is now. But I know that Chief Padilla is here and could, could speak to that if you'd like.
Thank you, Erin. Pat, did you want to add something to this?
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this too much, but I do want the council to know that in this instance, this, a constant crowing of a rooster, if that's what they do, they crow, I don't know. That's qualifies as a private nuisance and it, and a property owner can bring, they have a private right of action they can bring against a neighbor if they'd like. Erin said it very artfully, we're going to give her an office over here. These things are really, really hard to enforce because of the state's constitutional prohibitions on police officers entering. They have to be in advantage and at a vantage point where they can view it. It's, it's really an enforcement challenge and a very, very costly process. If we go to our hearing examiner, this is an extremely time and money intensive process to prosecute. So they're difficult from, from almost every aspect to prosecute noise. It's been a challenge for agencies. My gut says that other agencies do not take specific enforcement action, even though they bound them in their agencies because of the evidentiary and process limitations involved.
Thank you, Pat. Councilmember Larmour, did you have any follow-up or?
No, no, thank you. I appreciate that.
Chief Padilla, do you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, you know, we're going to do what we can on a case-by-case basis for these calls and deal with them, the nuisance. Looking at the law there, you know, it's pretty, some of the language is wide open. Well, I think would add to some of the enforcement challenges, right? Disturb the neighborhood, quantify that. What does that mean? The other part is, and I just want to be mindful here, is to ring the bell on resources, right? We are having staffing challenges, have had staffing challenges for years. And so this is one more thing added on. And when you look at the current trend in terms of, of kind of the public outcry to reduce the number of contacts, even if it's code enforcement, it eventually becomes police. And so looking at not putting police in worse situations that the public clarity is articulating, they don't want us to be in. I just want to ring the bell on that. And there's limited resources and is this in line with kind of the trend, what we're seeing in, in what they're asking law enforcement to do in their restrictions? So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Fincher.
I was thinking long-term. So we have people who have roosters now in the neighborhoods and all. What if we change the, the code so that people cannot, people coming into a neighborhood cannot bring in more roosters? They would be able to only have the hens and the ones that are currently there grandfathered in. That means when those died off, then eventually there would be no more roosters within certain zones. Still egg zones, some of the other zones, you can still continue having them to a certain number.
So then when people have to register?
Oh, you monitor that. That's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a little, I mean, I see where you're going with that, but it would mean that they would have to register the roosters they have. Then how do you know that's not a new rooster? Or I see what you're trying to say. I just think it gets a little bit tricky.
I wonder what goat tastes like.
Councilmember Bo, uh, Boyce.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I think we'll leave it as it is, the code. I don't want to not take Councilman Larmour's concern into the plan here. I would propose that, can we, in six months, can we bring this back to the council? So just kind of monitor, have a report out, just kind of see how things going. I think that'd be a good thing to do, sit some stuff down the road and then we can see what the data tells us again. But as far as changing the code, I just think, you know, it's hard already to kind of try to track this stuff here. And I don't know changing it will benefit anything. So I'm going to leave as is and then come back in six months and kind of show us what's been going on and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. I think that suggestion sounds like something we could probably look at. Absolutely. So I did take notes. It looks like we have a consensus to, at this point, not make any changes to what we currently have and just keep things as is. So at this point, I don't think we have to move anything to the consent calendar because we're not making any changes. Is that correct? I don't know. Derek, if you can just verify, I don't think we have to take any action on this. We're just going to keep things the way that it is. All right. So with that, Pat, you still have your hand up, but I think we, we were through that piece of it, correct? Thank you.
You are correct.
Okay.
I thought I heard a dog in the background too, Council President. I don't know who dog that were, so.
I am not in a place with a dog. So. All right. We will move on then. Thank you very much for that great conversation, but we will take a look at this in six months. I just want to say thank you so much to all the staff that put time into this because this was a lot of work. And to gather this information on a survey and bring it back to us, it, it was really helpful in our discussion today. And I just want to say thank you very much for the amount of time that we put into coming to this conclusion. Moving on to the next item, this is information only, the first quarter 2021 investment report.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Bartlamay. I'm the Cash and Investment Officer for the Finance Department. And I'm here to present the Cash and Investment Reports for the first quarter of 2021. So at the end of the first quarter, March 31st, 2021, our total cash and investment balance was just over $240 million with nearly $12 million in cash in the bank, nearly $88 million in the Washington State Local Government Investment Pool, and then around $140 million in our managed portfolio that's managed by our investment advisors at PFM. The PFM managed portfolio reflects an additional $20 million in new investments that were purchased in the first quarter of 2021. New investments were primarily US Treasuries. Yields remain relatively low. The PFM portfolio, as you can see, is still outperforming the state investment pool and cash at nearly one and a quarter percent, still by far outperforming the other options that we have available to us. Maturities overnight for the cash balance and the Washington State Investment Pool, those are both very liquid and we can access our cash at any time. And then 964 days, or just around three years for average maturity for the PFM managed portfolio. You can see the market value of the portfolio remains very strong. And again, that's due to the, the high quality of our portfolio overall. The, the value of that PFM managed portfolio is, is essentially more than we paid for it if we were to liquidate it today. In the lower section in the pie chart, this demonstrates our allocation of cash in the various investment types. In the red, you can see we saw the significant portion in the state investment pool, that red slice with significant portions in US Treasuries, that green section and government agencies in the orange. And next slide, please. So this slide shows the five-quarter cash flow of cash, state investment pool and PFM portfolio. We're keeping a minimal balance in cash to cover our current expenses and using the local government investment pool for our short-term liquidity as needed. And you can see there in the first quarter, in March, we moved portion of the state investment pool to that PFM managed portfolio to move that toward the long-term investments. And you can, as you can see, the total cash and investments at the top in that dark line, just slightly above the same quarter in the prior year. And next slide, please. This slide shows a three-year comparison of total cash and investments. So this is all three of those portfolios combined, cash, state investment pool and the PFM portfolio. And you can see our, our fairly predictable and traditional cash flows that we've seen before. And again, we're slightly above the prior year in so far this first quarter. And here we have a five-quarter comparison of interest earnings showing the general fund only in the darker blue and all other funds combined in the lighter blue. And the lower interest earnings in the second half of 2020 and the first quarter of 2021 are a reflection of the low rate and, and the low rates in the current market environment. Total 2020 earnings were about $4.6 million and so far the first quarter is about $883,000. Now we have total cash and investments by fund. And significant portions, as you can see, are owned by the general fund. They're at the top line, the $33 million. And then the various capital and utility funds, as well as the insurance funds, all hold significant portions of that $240 million. And next we have the, this is just the PFM managed portfolio without cash in the state investment pool. This shows in the lower left, you can see our, our laddered maturities. We're currently carrying a larger balance in the one to two-year in the shorter end of the, the maturity. And that may serve as well as the market moves towards a higher, higher yield environment. We may have opportunity to purchase new investments at a higher rate as current investments mature. And next slide. Last, we have our portfolio compliance document and this is provided by our investment advisors at PFM. And this demonstrates the allowable percentage of each investment type and our actual allocation at the end of the first quarter. It also reflects the balances of the prior quarter at year-end for 2020. So you can see that we're well within our permitted compliance for allocation for each of our various investment types. So you can see we could have up to 100% in US Treasuries and we have about 20, just shy of 28% currently. And that completes my presentation today. Are there any questions?
Great, Joe. Thank you very much. Councilmember Boyce.
Hey, thanks a lot. Thanks, Joe. And I think most of the council members know I represent the council on this committee. And I think I might have put this question to Derek before, but I don't know where we at. So if I look at the American Rescue Act Fund that we receive, this question could be for Joe, Paula or Derek. So that fund that we receive, we're not going to be spending it right away. It is in a plan to, to move this fund into the investment so we can earn something until we decide how to allocate the fund over the next four years. So, Joe, Paula or Derek.
So this is Joe. For the, for the short term, we have moved that cash, the, the first portion that we received last week. We did move that into the state investment pool. So that's where it is in the short-term portfolio at this moment.
This is Paula, Finance Director. Sorry, Councilmember Boyce. I was going to jump in as well. So when Joe talks about the short-term investment pool, that's going to be our state investment pool. That's that one that's not earning as much interest as we would typically earn. One of the things that we need to chat about is a little bit more is to kind of look at the spend down. When we put money into PFM, we're going to have to make sure that we have investments that are available to mature at the time that we need to spend those dollars to be able to get our return on investment. So that is a great conversation for us to be having with our PFM broker to see if there is a way we could make that work with our, with the city's cash flow needs that are here. We did receive that $14 million. That's only half of what we're expected to receive.
The other half is going to be coming next year, so we're not going to have all of it at once. So we do have a little footwork before we can decide to invest long-term, Councilmember Voice.
Thank you for that. I just think, you know, we need to look at a way to maximize our investment, as we know the state return is not all that great. So definitely something that I hope we can look into to make sure we are maximizing, you know, our potential earnings. So thanks for answering my question.
Absolutely. That's a great question, Councilmember Voice. Anyone else have other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Joe. We are going to move on to the next presentation. And up next is information only. Again, this is the April Financial Report, and Michelle is going to join us.
Hey, good afternoon, Council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, and I will be presenting an overview of the monthly financial report for April 2021. So there isn't a lot of changes from the March financial report, but there are a few things on each of the slides that I'll be focusing on during this presentation. So at the bottom of this slide, you'll see the sales tax revenues highlighted. Like I've mentioned before, the city stopped receiving sales tax annexation revenues as of June 2020, which was about $450,000 a month. So that's why we're showing a lower amount in 2021 than in 2020. But if we just compare sales and use tax revenues, the revenues from January through April of 2021 are 1.1 million higher than they were at the same time four months, the same four months in 2020. So on this slide, the other taxes consist mostly of BNO revenues and some admissions and gambling tax revenues. The March financial report showed a negative amount, but as promised, that issue has corrected itself, and the revenues for April have come in on budget. So on this slide, for the general fund year-to-year monthly comparison, the focus will be on expenditures since I already pointed out any kind of revenue variances on the previous slides. So with the four months of the year complete, expenditure targets for each department should have been around 33.3% of the budget. And as you can see, that all general fund departments are coming in at or below that percentage. The one category that I wanted to highlight is non-departmental because of the high variance from 2020 to 2021. And this is due to the 4.4 million that was transferred out of the general fund and into the liability fund. Highlighted on this slide of the other funds overview year-to-year comparison is the Capital Resources Fund. The 2021 revenues through April are almost 28% lower than in 2020, and this reduction is due to the temporary loss of SST revenues as well as the shifting of the 2% internal utility tax revenues. The internal tax, internal utility tax revenues were dedicated to the Capital Resources Fund for the sole repayment of debt in the city's other capital projects funds, and that debt was retired at the end of 2020, and this portion of the internal tax allocation is now dedicated to the general fund, which totals about 1.6 million a year. Also highlighted on this slide was, is the criminal justice revenues. And in the March report, they were down about 16% on the revenues at the same time of the year as in 2020. But now you can see in April, the revenues are slightly higher than they were at the same time in 2020. As the year goes on, we can expect the variance between 2020 and 21 to continue to increase in a positive way for multiple reasons. So the first one being the criminal justice sales tax annexation revenues that were in the general fund have been moved back to the Criminal Justice Fund as of as of June 2020, which will benefit this fund by about $250,000 a year. In addition, the red light camera revenues continue to come in steadily. The city has receded an additional $55,000 in red light camera revenue fines for the first four months of this year, more than it did in the same time last year. Also playing a factor in the increased revenue variance in 2021 will be these school zone cameras, which will benefit this fund as of May. On this next slide, there aren't really any funds that have large variance from 2020 to 2021, with the exception of the Gulf Fund. And this variance is just due to an anomaly in 2020 for the funds received for the second payment of the par-three sale. As you can see, the revenues from 2019 to 2021 are comparable with a positive variance of roughly 7%. And on our last slide, I've highlighted the liability fund, which has a large variance in revenues and expenditures. The revenue variance is mostly due to the transfer in of the 4.4 million from the general fund. It is also in small part due to a budgeted increase in allocations from departments into this fund to cover the increased costs in insurance premiums, which you can see is reflected in the larger expenditure variance. The city is in the process of receipting a reimbursement of $400,000 for costs paid by the fund that are above our retention limit. So you'll see these number, the variances kind of tweak when we, when it comes to the June report. So that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Good report, Michelle. I really liked the way you presented that. I didn't see anything kind of sticking out that we needed to be concerned about, so I'd be interested, just in case I miss anything, from your certain amount of expertise or anything you think we need to be concerned about.
Not as of this time, this, this report, there, there wasn't a whole lot out there. Normally, I kind of point out a few more things, but the, this one was pretty not too much going on. The May report might have a little more variances, but nothing too crazy going on right now.
That was my thought too, but you did such a matter of experts. I'd rather hear it from you, so.
Good point. And I know you talked about the criminal justice spend a little bit. We'll have some more information on that a little bit later this evening. So any other questions or comments? All right, wonderful. Thank you, Michelle, for joining us.
Thank you.
Next up is a software license with Vermont Systems, and this also requires action. I believe Greg is presenting.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Greg Sconce, Application Development Supervisor. With me tonight, I have Lori Hogan, Recreation Superintendent, Steve Barton, our Project Manager, and Mike Carrington, the IT Director, to assist with answering any questions you might have a bit later. Tonight, we're asking the council to authorize the mayor to sign the services agreement with Vermont Systems, Inc. at a total contract cost not to exceed $273,160 to implement RecTrack, which is their recreation scheduling and management software. RecTrack will be replacing Class, which is the existing recreation management system. Class was originally implemented back in July of 1999 and reached its end of life at the end of 2018. In researching replacements for Class, the Parks Department evaluated a variety of software solutions, but found those provided decreased functionality and increased costs compared to VSI's RecTrack solution. Along with allowing us to move off the outdated and unsupported class system, RecTrack will enhance the city's capabilities to conduct recreation management by providing critical efficiencies to support Parks operations. This solution will allow recreation staff to input, manage, and maintain customer accounts, memberships, program scheduling, and also includes facility rentals and the ability to do leak scheduling, all of which support Parks operations, as well as allows customers to sign up and pay for recreation classes online. This services agreement with VSI provides for an initial one-year term that will renew automatically on a yearly basis for up to four additional years for a maximum contract term of five years. The first two years of costs, which include all hardware, licensing, training, and non-reoccurring costs, are covered by the funds currently budgeted for the Parks System Replacement Project with the ongoing licensing costs moving to general maintenance in year three. So no new dollars are needed for this project. So with that, I'm happy to enter any, answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This makes perfect sense. Anyone have questions or comments about it? All right. So, Councilmember Voice.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand the, the portion of the contract that talked about the $23,000 for the Card Connect. Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Oh, sure. So because RecTrack is an online system for customers to also be able to register and pay for classes online, there is a need for credit card processing. The RecTrack system itself doesn't do its own credit card processing. They contract out to vendors. One of those vendors is CardConnect, which is the vendor this, we're choosing to go with, partly because they do have such a tight integration with RecTrack, but also because CardConnect was able to meet the same 2.65% credit card processing fees that we currently have in place for our other online payment solutions. So we're able to match the, the same fees. But because CardConnect is a separate vendor, that is a separate contract, and at that lower cost, which I believe also includes costs for rental of the credit card swipe machines that will be at the Kent Commons and the Senior Center.
And Greg, with our old software, it is equivalent to the same price that we pay today, you said?
No, let me, good question. Let me clarify that. The charges that CardConnect are charging are equivalent to the same charges that we get from Alacrity, which is used for the Inova system that Finance uses for point-of-sale and Alavant. Our old system, Class, had its completely different costing schedule. And in fact, right now, the city pays for those credit card processing fees for any of the payments made through the old class system because there wasn't a good way to have the, those fees charged back to the customer. But with this move to RecTrack, much like we did for the Finance point-of-sale system, the customers will be charged the credit card processing fees at the time of making payment, which moves that burden off of the city.
Totally agree, totally get it, Greg. Totally support. I'm just curious, the class system, how long we had that system in place?
Since 1999.
Wow.
It was a workhorse. It's been around a long time.
We probably squeezed every inch out of that system. So, hey, I totally support. Thanks a lot, Greg. Appreciate you enlightening me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. So before us, it's the software license with Vermont Systems. Everyone okay moving us forward to consent? All right. We will move it forward to the consent calendar. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And then next up is some information only. Red Light Camera update, and Chief Padilla.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present. At your request, some time ago, I believe it was Councilmember Voice asked that we, at some point, do a red light camera update. So that's what I have for you tonight. And you're in for a treat because it involves me and numbers, so this ought to be very fun. We'll get right into it. Red Light Camera report here. Some, just some background just for everybody's edification. If we recall, years ago, this was prompted by calls from the community about red light violators and collisions related to that, so we looked into it. We did conduct a feasibility study years ago to look at the effectiveness and the sustainability of the cameras. And if you remember back to that report, it was a little bit of a mixed bag as to whether or not it consistently, over, say, five-plus years, reduced injury collisions and whether or not it sustained, it was self-sustaining in terms of financing itself. So we have a couple of years under our belt now. We'll take a look at that. We also did a traffic study outlining where we had most of our collisions occurring, which intersections in the city. So that helped us identify where we needed these most. We began, if you remember, implementing back in August of 2019, and then moved to full implementation by September of 2019. Our purpose, we've been very clear and consistent with the community and with all of you. It was to reduce injury and death, but it was also transparent wise, we needed a revenue source to pay for body worn cameras, so that was a big part of the push and consideration at the time. So, next slide, please. So we did locate seven intersections. If you remember, six of them were the top six there, 104th and 256, 104th to 40th, all the way down to the two on Central Avenue, were, were the highest rate for collisions every year historically. The Kent Des Moines Road and Pacific Highway intersection was also up on our list as far as collisions. It also made sense at the time to put a camera there, seeing how the city of Des Moines had already been operating a red light camera on their half of the intersection. So those were the areas chosen. At the time, we were using automated traffic solutions as the vendor. They were bought out, and the new vendor is Vera Mobility. We have 11 cameras at these seven locations. 40th, the 84th, and 212th Street, and the Central Avenue and Smith have two cameras at each of those locations, taking two approaches. Otherwise, each of the other intersections has one approach. Next, Kim. So citywide collision, just to give you some context for the numbers, if you look at our numbers from 2017, they range from 3, 3019 as a high, all the way to the low of last year in 2081. Average monthly totals are consistently, you know, ratio to that. And 2021 numbers are as of May, so we're still not even halfway through the data for 2021. Our five-year average with everything considered here is about 2,595 collisions per year in the city. And on average, we have nine, it's actually 8.9, but nine collisions a year that end up in fatality. So we still have an ongoing challenge there. Next. So what does it look like at the locations where we have red light cameras? You take a look there. Hopefully, everybody can see that very clearly on their screen. The 2017 and 18 are obviously pre-camera. 19 and 20, we have data on that. It's good to remember, we didn't have full implementation until September of 2019. And 2021 is incomplete. So looking at the data, not being a super number, guys, like I mentioned before, Tia, I went ahead and just compared 2017 and 18 as, straight across with 2019 and 2020. And it looks like on my slide here, let me take a look. You can see the numbers there. So pretty significant difference in the numbers. The data is pretty consistent so far that there is a downward trend of each of the years there, and in some cases, pretty drastic. So it's an indication that the cameras are working to a degree. I do want a footnote, and you probably already asked yourself about what the impact of the pandemic is. I think it's fair to speculate that there was some impact in that during the lockdown and whatnot, and where more people were telecommuting, we may have experienced less traffic volume. And so, again, we're in a position where we're not sure we have a full year to look at, but all things being equal, we definitely have a downward trend, so.
Councilmember Voice has his hand raised. I just want to make sure we capture.
The chief just hit on what I'm about to say. I mean, I think 2021 is probably a year that, I probably can throw your data off, because I think in my house, so you have three people who have not driven to work for quite some time, right? So I just think we need to keep that in mind as we go forward. 2021, I think a lot of my peers probably say this, will agree with that, that a lot of us is probably not driving to work, and therefore, the data is probably not going to be a good reputation, but definitely something we need to look at as we move forward. So just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, absolutely. So something to look for. And if you remember back to the feasibility study, we looked at other studies from other states, and it, it was a mixed bag. Some states saw continual violations and sustaining revenue to, to keep the systems. Others, including some locally, after five years, solid curtail, and, and so they had to address those issues. So.
Did you want to, Councilmember Larmour, did you want to ask something?
Yeah, so just looking at the numbers. So we said that they were fully operational by, was it September of 2019?
Yes.
Okay. It's interesting. I'm still, I mean, if I, to discount the COVID skews, looking at just 2019, I mean, even though it wasn't implemented for a full year, there's still some decline. So I think, you know, like you said, we're, we're on a downward trend. I, I think, you know, once we can get through what COVID skewed, hopefully, we'll continue to see a reduction there. So, because I think, yeah, just looking at 2018 to 2019, you still see some reduction. So that's encouraging.
Okay, I agree. I hope that the trend hold. I mean, ultimately, going back to what I said when we brought this on, you know, at one point, ideally, we'd like there'd be zero need for any of these cameras, right? But I think at this point, that is not the case and they're still being useful. Good, any other questions at the point? I've got some more, okay. Kim, next slide, please. Looking at my notes here. So as a reminder, we've always approached this in a very reasonable way. We're not looking to do, you know, really tickets that really aren't justified. So processing includes that one of my officers sits down and reviews both the photo images of where the car was compared to the red light and the 12 second video that shows the car approaching and as it goes through the intersection, where they were when the light was. So our approach is the standards are the same. If you wouldn't get a ticket from an officer in person, we're not going to have the machine just generate a ticket because so we don't get that. If you stop, there are jurisdictions that if you cross that line, but you still come to a complete stop, you're going to get a ticket. In the city of Kent, if you inadvertently cross over the stop line or the crosswalk line, we're not going to give you a ticket if you come to a complete stop. We had questions last time, if you remember, about California stops. They're still illegal. You can't roll through an intersection making a right turn on a red light. And the tickets, just as a reminder, do not go on a driving abstract and not get reported to your insurance. They are a little less than what the traditional ticket is. And I still don't know the answer to why. But the automated ticket is $136 and the full ticket in person is 139. Again, I don't know why that is, but that is the case. And then just kind of, you know, this is a completely avoidable issue, if you will. It's it's one of, I think we referred to it in discussions as a, it's kind of like a syntax. If you don't run a red light, this should never impact your life other than maybe keep someone from causing a collision that you may be at or around. So just a reasonable approach in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fenter has her hand up.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Chief, do you know or do you have handy what percentage of the tickets are actually contested? And then out of those that go to court, which were found to actually be guilty and still have to pay the fine?
Been a while, and I don't want to throw my process attorney, city attorney friends under the bus here, but if they have answers to that, I'd welcome them to jump in. It's been a while since I've heard numbers on that, so I can get back to you. Last I heard, we were, people were paying their fines. We did have an issue with a higher amount of people not paying at all. But those that did, the majority of them simply paying their fine and most of the tickets were not contested. But I want to say roughly around 60, 70%, but I'd want to check those numbers and get back to you.
Thank you.
Pat, do you want to jump in real quick?
Yeah, I'll just note that our office does not get involved in in these unless they're actually contested by individuals. And even then, there's some that we don't, we don't participate in. It's really an issue between the court and an individual. The only times we get involved in these cases is when an individual is represented by an attorney. So I do not, I'm sorry, I do not have that information.
Kim.
All right, I took a note, Councilmember Fenter, and I'll circle back to you. Okay, any other questions on this part here? Got it, all right, next slide, please, Kim. All right, so revenue. And I get, I want to thank the court staff. They kind of put this together for me at last minute. But they have here their report out. And if you see, it is both school zone cameras, that's the S Z C you see there, and the red light cameras for the last year and then going back historically. So some of the things to note, the bottom line is, this is the revenue being generated. And so we, so far, it looks like that the red light cameras were pandemic proof, if you will. They continued to steadily increase, not increase, but generate citations. Looking at it, you know, in January, we fell behind a little bit. And then you start to see us consistently be at or above, April was a high month, what we had in 2020 for violations. Again, we're not sure what the impact on the pandemic was. But there you go. We definitely look like we're getting more to what we expect in terms of normal numbers for volume of traffic. So there's that. Looking further down here, this is, you know, 19, you're looking at when we, the inception of the program, pretty consistent ballpark, 2,500 to, you know, 300 tickets a month being generated. And the revenues from that year compared to what we're at this year. Again, we have 11 cameras, seven intersections. We pay and and the numbers you're looking at here are net revenue to the city. So that's after we pay for the price to run the cameras to the vendor. Roughly on average, we pay about $5,250 for each camera each month. Additionally, their staff time accounted for through the courts and their staff time to the police department is paid for the officers who are assigned to sit down and review the tickets. This number here, the revenue on the chart represents what's left over after all the expenses are paid. And I'll pause for questions on this.
Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, are there any data that tell us that we need be looking at other school zone area for safety reasons for school cameras?
So we have not done a recent traffic study for that. But in my last slide, I was going to talk about kind of the current environment and and throw out that concept exactly, Councilmember Voice, is that we might want to be looking at it. It may be a good time if, just in terms of the last time we ran the numbers, to go and do that anyway. So I don't have a specific answer to you, but we'd be happy to to conduct a feasibility study and get data back to you at a later time.
I think as we go forward, I know Councilmember Larmour and Councilman Corey still have kids in school, so they might have some good ideas, thoughts as we get down towards the end. So thank you, Chief.
Okay, I just put that down on my to do list there. Any other questions on the revenue? Okay, next slide, please, Kim. So I think, again, with a little bit of a question mark as to what the numbers really would have looked like in 2020, I think we can say safely, the cameras are performing as we expected they would. And they continue to issue tickets and they continue to be self sustaining and funding themselves. So that's the good news because we certainly did not want to end up in a place where we were going to have a deficit, right? To Councilmember Voice's point, I do want to throw out just something for consideration by the council with the new environment. And you're going to hear me speaking to this a lot. With the restrictions that are in place that we're adapting to, there is, you know, there's a strong push for less involvement in police and lower level crimes or lower level incidents such as this. So it's, we're in a place where proactive enforcement is going to be modified to a degree. At that, you know, ringing the bell, I know I sound like I'm complaining all the time, I'm not, but it's my job to make sure you have the info. We still are dealing with a resource staffing issue within the police department. And we have an emergency decline in police recruiting and retention. At an upcoming public safety report, I intend to try and get you a current picture on what that looks like because it's changed quite a bit and it's changed quickly in the last couple of months. To give you a preview, on average, we have about 150 candidates apply to be police officers here at Kent. And last month, we had 15, 15. At the same time, I have several officers preparing to go work in other states. So resources are going to be a challenge. And however you want to look at this, I am suggesting there may be an opportunity to leverage automated enforcement, traffic enforcement technology. Because regardless of what's going on in terms of police staffing and and all of that, collision injuries and fatality collisions are still among some of the highest issues and threats to our community. And so we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to have people voluntarily comply with the traffic laws and not have collisions. So that, I believe, Kim, next slide, please. Completes my reports and I'll take any other questions.
All right, I am going to start here with hands raised first and I'm going to go Councilmember Voice, followed by Thomas.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I add Councilmember Show to that list too, because she do have a high schooler. So they won't forget her, but those three definitely have kids in school. So they definitely can provide you some input based on what their kids go through. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Thomas, you are on mute. There you go.
What's going on? So thank you, Madam President. And I, if I go off, let me know again, because I'm having computer problems here. Bill, I also have grandkids out there going to school, so don't forget me. Yeah, no, it's okay. Chief, when you hear about a situation like in Portland where these 50 guys, 50 people, 50 officers resigned, do you make any kind of outreach to get a hold of these well trained people as well? Or how does that work for you? Is that something that's done in your, in your office? Or I'm just kind of curious.
Well, we have not specifically, to my knowledge, reached out to any of the Portland officers. So that's the first answer. But in general, Councilmember Thomas, we do go to some areas in our country we have before where we know that either they're doing layoffs, do the budget cuts or other issues. You know, we've been to other parts of the the country, like we were in Tennessee for a while and Memphis was having significant cutbacks in law enforcement. We were able to go to some places like Georgia and Florida where, you know, basically, quite honestly, they don't pay officers very well at all. And so there's opportunity. And then we look to recruit, not to steal from our neighbors, but those officers looking to change departments locally, we do, we do there. Kind of the unspoken rule amongst the chiefs is we won't go and pilfer each other's staffing and actively recruit, both alcum applications and we'll screen them heavily. To close out the answer to your question, sir, just a reminder, we have incredibly high standards. And whether you're a veteran officer or a new officer, there's a lot of screening that occurs before you can work here. So.
I understand that. I just thought there's areas, like you were saying, that are available to recruit. You know, I mean, you don't want to go to some places, you know, but there's other places where you can get highly skilled people here. But anyway, that's just a thought. I have one last question, if I may, Madam President, and that is, I've been hearing a lot of good responses to the fact of the body cameras that your officers are wearing, that it really helps for transparency. I understand some of the officers aren't real pleased. And I'm not sure where I'm getting that filtered from, but overall, would you say that you're pretty happy with the cameras?
Absolutely, I can say that unequivocally. I can also say, and there's always exceptions, right, Councilmember Thomas? But I can also say that overwhelmingly, both the union stands behind having the body worn cameras, the Kent Police Officers Union, and just a general rank and file, I think you would be hard pressed to find someone that says, I don't want to wear this camera anymore. In addition to transparency and the investigation ability of having that for recording what's going on, it really is also a safety measure and protection piece, both physically, safety if something goes wrong, but also the defensibility of their actions that they have it on. So I would be surprised if there are too many of our officers who do not want body worn cameras.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Now, Chief, I know Councilmember Voice talked about school zone cameras and maybe other schools to look at that may have safety issues. I know when we first had the conversation about red light cameras, we had Public Safety Committee. So we were presented with different scenarios, looked at different intersections, looked at data. I think that it might be a good idea at some point in the near future to revisit that. And especially from your department's viewpoint, where you feel that it might be effective to add additional cameras or automated technology. I think that it would be a good idea to at least see that presentation and look at some data and decide as a council if it's something that would be an option for us to move forward.
Absolutely, I will do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Council President, because following on your, on your comment, sort of the same idea, I think maybe it's time to revisit it also with the kid's school district and find out if we can get some data from them. Because we've had a couple of new schools built. You know, there's, they're talking about boundary line changes. So we might see density, you know, density changes of kids walking to different schools as those change. So I think it might be a good time to revisit the school zone camera statistics as well.
Got it.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Chief. I think we've given you a couple of things to to look at and look forward to hearing back from you in the near future on, you know, whether we should explore some additional options at some point. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, next up, we have the franchise ordinance with Olympic Pipeline Company. And I believe Chad's going to be presenting.
Yes, good evening, Council President. Good evening, Council. Olympic Pipeline has been in the valley for several decades. They transport gasoline, diesel and jet fuel through a pipeline that runs under PSE property next to the interurban trail. And they've had a franchise to cross nine different streets in the valley where the interurban trail crosses Kent right of way, again, for several decades. The request tonight is to extend the franchise or reconfirm the franchise for a 10 year period. The franchise in front of you covers insurance and indemnification, locating the pipeline when necessary in the right of way, relocation is necessary, any kind of emergencies or maintenance. And it does come with a franchise fee. It's not a lot of money, $28,000 per year. It has a 1.5% inflation factor on it. And that, that fee is similar to what other communities are getting that have Olympic Pipeline running through their communities as well. And that covers our costs to, just to administer the franchise, which is about all we can charge legally. So we're, we are happy to have that fee to cover those costs. But again, it's not a moneymaker. It's just a part of running the city and allowing Olympic to function. They move, like I said, gasoline, diesel and jet fuel from refineries to distribution facilities throughout the the area. And it's just part of being in municipalities. So any questions on that I can cover? Otherwise, it's, this is going before the council on July 6th to try and move the ordinance through.
Thank you, Chad. Anyone have questions or comments about this? All right, so this is for the franchise 10 year agreement with Olympic Pipeline Company. Everyone okay moving us forward to consent? All right, we'll move it to consent then. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
And then up next, we've got South 218th Street and 98th Avenue South from 94th Place, South to South 216th. And this is PSRC grant, which of course we love grants.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great news tonight. This is Mark Madphi, Design Engineering Supervisor with the city. And I'll be covering the next two items, both for accepting grants through PSRC. I can run them one presentation or I can do them separately for each item as you prefer.
You just do, I think, what works best for you. And if we've got questions, we can ask them along the way.
Okay, perfect. Well, the first one is grant acceptance for the South 218th Street. This is a continuation of the 224th corridor of Phase Three continues up the hill. It's the area highlighted in green there. It goes from 94th Place up to 216th. And this grant amount is for $4,915,680. And the city applied for him successfully and receiving these funds through a competitive grant application process with the PSRC. And these funds will be available for construction in 2024. So basically, we're widening to 18th Street from 94th Place to 216th, the three lanes, adding curb gutter sidewalks, farm drainage, street lighting. And like I said, it'll extend the project up about half a mile or so beyond where we ended it for the 224th. the 224th corridor, Phase Two. And the next item is 76th Avenue, the North Segment Improvements. The city was successful in receiving three million, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars from PSRC for this project. And this one will continue the improvements that we recently completed in front of Blue Origin. We're going up to 212th Street, so it's about a thousand feet. And we'll be raising the road there to help prevent flooding and putting in a concrete road with new curb, gutter sidewalks, stone grained, street lighting. And those funds will be available for construction in 2023. And I'd like to note a small correction on the action page for the 76th project. And it shows a match, city match of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred. That should be five hundred and forty-four thousand. It's, it's thirteen and a half percent of the, of the total, so small correction noted there. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mark. That's still a good match deal, I think, on that one. Councilmember Voice, you have your hand up?
Yes, Madam President, we had done a phenomenal job on that flooding down there. And this last portion, I don't know, did that portion get flooded more so than the portion that we had down towards Blue Origin?
It did, did not experience the flooding that we had further to the south. But, but, but there was occasional flooding in that area too, and it is slightly below the hundred-year flood elevation. So we'll be raising that above the hundred-year flood elevation with this project.
Thank you, sir. And you say 2023, that's a couple of years away, so why so far out? That's just, do we get the grant money right away? Or do we get the grant money in 2023?
Well, we got, we got approved for the, for the grant funds. They become effective in 2023. They're actually available in late to 2022. We're also hoping that possibly if we're ready earlier, that we might be able to construct it earlier and request the grant funds to be moved up. So that's a possibility.
Yeah, and that was my question, you know, if not possible, because it'll be nice. And then councilmember Thomas, who's been around forever, it'd be nice to have that whole area taken care of, because it's been a nightmare for many, many, many years. So I will guess if we can move it up forward and everything falls in line and we could support that, then I will hope that's something we could do. So, thank you.
Sure.
Row, row, row your boat gently down the street.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. So we've got two grant. Grants here before us to accept and move forward to consent. The first one is the 218th and 98th. The other is 76th Avenue South. Is everyone okay moving both of these forward? All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. Great work.
Thank you.
And then we are moving on to 76th Avenue South. And this is also another grant. Wow, this is a great, great couple of items here, one after the other. So I believe Suzanne is going to present on this one.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I covered both of those.
I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just wanting to accept more here. All right. With that, we will move on now to the last item of our agenda, which is the continuation of our conversation on the Boards and Commissions ordinance. So Tammy, do you want to go ahead and just kind of recap a few things, and we can start off where we left off last time?
Sure. So kind of my plan today was to kind of pick up where we left off. If we have time, I have some revisions proposed that we could go through. If we run out of time, I can reserve just all of those changes to discuss at a later meeting. So just let me know, Madam President, you know, sort of as we get near the end of where everybody's getting kind of tired and exhausted, and we can stop and kind of move on. One issue I did want to bring up to readdress today was, we talked about remote meetings, and that remote meetings were not going to be allowed except on an emergency basis. At the close of the meeting, our City Clerk's Office did reach out to us to advise of some difficulties that they do have with the Fireman's Relief and Pension Board, that their bylaws do currently allow for remote attendance, particularly because the current members are elderly. Some of them live in Eastern Washington, and one in fact lives in Montana. So not allowing for remote attendance for that committee would be problematic for the current members. So did want to see if there was a way that we could create an exemption for that committee and also kind of relay it over to the Disability Board, which this is the Left One Disability Board. Again, it's a very small group that we're typically dealing with. So that was one issue I wanted to raise again today, see if there was any ability for council to consider making those two exemptions. If there was agreement on that, what I would do then is go over into those code chapters that are specific to the Fireman's Relief and Pension Board and to the Left One Disability Board and provide in there that a remote attendance would be allowed, subject to, you know, certain conditions imposed. So if we could maybe start discussing that item today, and then I can move on with the rest of the ordinance.
Sure. And I think that's a great suggestion, because we do have several people that, that live, you know, in Montana or live in Eastern Washington that have the ability to dial into those. So I think it's a great suggestion. Any other comments or questions about that? Making that exemption for those two committees?
I will support that.
Is everyone okay with having Tammy move forward? Councilmember Larmour?
I guess I'm trying to understand why we have out of state residents sitting on Kent boards.
So for the Relief and Pension Board and for the Left One Disability Board, the individuals who serve on those boards are members who receive benefits from those. There's a smaller pool of folks now that they're just aging out, because now we have the left system in person, so those have kind of taken over. So there's a smaller pool. If, for some reason, on those other boards, we were not able to find members to serve on them that also receive the benefits, it could be opened up to, you know, all law enforcement officers or firefighters if they live within the jurisdiction, but it would not allow those who directly benefit from the board and from the benefits that the board administers to actually serve on it. So in the past, that's pretty much what they've done, is the, the members of the board have been those who actually receive the benefits that they're administering. So they're kind of interested in the business decisions that are being made as, as it pertains to their benefits and their pension.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with those exemptions.
All right, Tammy. So I think we're good here as far as making the exceptions for those two.
Perfect. And I'm now going to share my screen and pull up the ordinance that we've been addressing. And you should see at the very top, I've highlighted subsection F, which is where I believe we left off. It's again, just discussing the board and their meetings and how the, the business gets conducted. So the last issue we had discussed at our last meeting was this here dealing with a remote attendance. I'm going to be amending this, and if we have time today, I'll, I'll show you the amendments that I have to generally provide that it would only be on an emergency basis with respect to every other board and commission other than the two we just discussed. So the next bit relating to how the board conducts its business is that each one needs to ensure that they have a process in place to take minutes of the business that occurs. And so one way that we've accomplished this is by making the Secretary of each commission a staff representative who is appointed. And this will help ensure that city records are maintained for records retention purposes and public records responsibilities. This next section here talks about the conduct of the members in, you know, as the meetings are being conducted, how they are to conduct themselves. They're to treat each other with respect. They're not to interrupt others. They're, the chair is the one who will manage the meeting and the agenda. The meeting will be organized, and they will only speak when they're recognized by the chair and granted the floor. They're to refrain from interrupting others, kind of just standard course that you would expect to find in bylaw provisions we've stated here in the ordinance. If an individual repeatedly violates these rules or these provisions, they can be removed from the commission. So this is an issue that we've often dealt with, with a lot of our boards and commissions. They don't fully understand what the role of the public is, if at all. And so these meetings are the meetings of the boards and commissions themselves. It's not a meeting for the public to come and, you know, air their grievances. So technically, the public is not entitled to be able to get up and speak on an issue before the board. However, the board chair can grant the public an opportunity to speak. Often, they do. And some of the boards and commissions have specific items on the agenda where public input is being sought, particularly the Land Use and Planning Board. There's often an open hearing where public input is being sought. So this provision here just helps explain for the board chair as to when the public is allowed to comment. So if they are invited by the chair to comment, then there's these provisions here that deal with what is expected from that member of the public. They are to sign in, indicate their name and their city of residence. They are limited in the remarks, just as they are before your meetings, to three minutes. And all remarks should pertain to matters that are actually for the business being before the Board and Commission. This here also helped, this next section, subsection I, Public Demeanor, also helps the chair recognize what behavior is appropriate for members of the public who do attend. And so this indicates that disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Under our Kent City Code, there is a separate code section that says it is a misdemeanor to interrupt a public meeting that's occurring. And so if the public is going to attend, they need to be mindful that they don't disrupt the meeting. They can't threaten to harm any of the commission members.
Yeah, Tammy, I can't answer your question. No, I mean, I, we get all these ground rules. So you got people stepping in that may not know anything about robber rules or anything, right? So what is the expectation with someone coming in and being on the committee and possibly in the chair and understanding, you know, that they are, that there's a certain procedure they go through, the type of meeting? Who responsible for educating and training these people? We're just making an assumption that they can step in and hit the ground running, which is not the case.
Definitely not the case. So it typically is the department liaison who will assist the commission and kind of, and then a new chair coming in, sort of understanding what their roles and responsibilities are. I have actually gone to some of the commission meetings to help instruct the chair and the members as to what the Roberts rules are, how they work, how to conduct the meetings. And so a lot of the information that's here in this ordinance is information that I've presented when I've been asked to come before a commission to speak to them. So it is kind of a standing invite. I know other attorneys in our office as well has gone to some of these smaller boards and commissions to help explain Roberts rules and kind of how the business gets conducted. But generally, it does fall to the department liaisons. I'm pretty sure that Haley Von Steele has probably had these conversations with the Land Use and Planning Board, and I'm certain that Julie Periscondola has done the same with the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thanks, Tammy.
Sure. So the next section then talks about voting. And again, the reason that all this is sort of spelled out, it's known to all of you, because you deal with these in your meetings regularly. But this is going to be for our boards and commissions. This is going to be generally their handbook as to how work gets done. So this section here on voting talks about how votes actually occur and how business gets conducted. So here, it instructs that the chair will ask for a motion. Each member will be entitled to one vote, including the chair. The chair will have a right to vote. Motions are to be made, seconded, and then voted upon. The chair is also authorized to establish any procedures that may be needed in order to cast votes. Every member, unless they're disqualified, should be able to cast their vote. And unless directed by the chair, all votes are to be by voice or a show of hands. No votes will be allowed by proxy. We have had that question come up before of a commission member is not able to attend. Can they just email the action they want to take on an item? And the answer to that is no. It has to be taken at the meeting.
Tammy, one quick question. So a lot of the commissions, some of them got three members. So one yes, one no, one abstaining. How would that rule?
So, and we have down here, there's another, I wonder if I passed over. Oh, right here. So if a member abstains, under Roberts rules, the default is that that is taken as a no vote. We've actually changed that here through these rules, just like it is in your rules, that if a member abstains, it's just, it's like they didn't vote. It's just not counted.
Okay, gotcha. I'll make sure. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So the next section here, subsection H, just refers that it's a majority vote that will carry the action, doesn't require a supermajority or anything, unless there is some specific statutory provision that requires it. Not one that I'm aware of, at least offhand, that these members would be dealing with. And then at the request of a chair, just like it happens at your meetings, there can be a roll call vote that's taken.
Tammy?
Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you. And thank you, Council President. So Tammy, going back to what Bill's question was, normally, or at least in my past experience, if there is a tie, one-to-one, and one abstention, it still fails for lack of a majority, even though it may not count as an absentee, may not count as a, or abstention may not count as a no vote. It kind of does, because the tie does not pass anything.
I, I would agree with that assessment. I mean, unless we were to change the rules here and follow the Roberts rules default, that the abstention would count as a no vote. I, I think you're right.
Because that's typically the way I read it, anyway. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so moving on, this other section here, 2.50110. This generally just reiterates for the members of the boards that public facilities cannot be used for political purposes. There is one big distinction between what these boards and commissions can do and what you can do as a council. Together, council can take a collective position on a political issue. That option is not available for members of boards and commissions. So they cannot use any public facilities for any political purpose at all. So this section here just restates that for their information. We have had this come up before with some of the boards and commissions. There might be an issue that's on the ballot. They want to discuss it at their meeting, and we have to refer them back that it's a provision that's not allowed under our state law. This next section here just deals with a quorum, just clarifies that a quorum is a majority of the then-current membership. So if we have a couple of members where the positions are unfilled, we would just take those positions that are filled to determine what our actual quorum is, and that it is a majority of those that are present of that quorum that will carry the business. So this next section here, we talked about it one of our prior, prior meetings, but it's the removal from office. So this is the provisions that the mayor can use to remove somebody from a board or commission. The one thing I do want to point out here is there are two boards and commissions where it is the council that holds the appointive authority. And so that is for the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, as well as the Special Facilities District for the Kent Special Events Center. So in those particular boards and commissions, it will, it will be council who will make the removal decision and not the mayor. So under here, removal can occur if a member ceases to remain qualified for the position. So some of the general ordinance here under, I think, chapter 2.50 has, they need to be a resident of the city of Kent, or they need to work in Kent. If that failed to be, if they've no longer lived in Kent or didn't work in Kent, they would now be disqualified for their position. Or some particular boards and commissions have very special qualification requirements that they need to make. If for some reason they now are no longer qualified, they will be removed from the commission. So they can also be removed if they commit misconduct or if they neglect of duty. And so if you have a commission member who is regularly absent, I think councilmember Voice, we had talked about this at our last meeting, and this is a provision that we could use to remove them. If they, you know, abuse the emergency provision for remote attendance, it's a basis that we could use this neglect of duty to remove them from the commission. So it's pretty general, just says that they can't use their position to get special privileges or exemptions. If that were to occur, they could be removed. They can't disclose confidential information that they receive by way of their membership. If they do that, that's the basis that they can be used to remove them. And they can't disrupt meetings. If that's something that happens continuously where the chair isn't able to keep them on task or to address only the issue that's before the border commission, that could lead to their ultimate removal as well. Or if there is a joint recommendation of both the chair as well as the department director that supports that board or commission, they could also be removed. So the next section is reports. The border commission can make a report to the chief administrative officer. It can either be a report that they choose to do on their own, or it could be a report that the CAO has specifically asked for from them. And if there is a vacancy on the border commission, this just says that it's going to be referred back to and be filled by this general provision. And this is the one that says if there is an alternate, that alternate will be promoted into that member position. Or if there is no alternate serving on that board and commission, then the mayor will go out, seek a new appointment to serve that unexpired term. And so with that, that I think is the worst of it. That's all of those general provisions that we've gone through in three meetings. Now, the rest of these are going to be very specific to each board and commission. And most of the revisions that I have for you are going to be just merely deleting text that is no longer necessary, because we've addressed it in chapter 2.50. Or we're going to be adding some text that is specific to that board and commission, because state law requires it, and I noticed it wasn't set out. So I'm just doing that for clarity. So going on to the first one is the Civil Service Commission for the Police Department. So this language that I've added here basically says that this commission is going to be served in accordance with what's here under this chapter, but also under that general chapter that we've just created in 2.50. And so now this next section, I set out very specific qualification provisions that are set by state law. So these are additional qualifications, in addition to the ones that we've added in the general chapter that are going to apply to appointees for the Civil Service Commission. So under state law, they have to be citizens of the United States. They have to be residents of the city of Kent for at least three years before their appointment. They have to be electors in King County, and they have to serve six-year terms. So we are stuck with that six-year term. And so even though we can increase or we can impose term limits, there are, each term is going to be six years. So if we allow two terms for that, they can have up to 12 years. And then at the time of the appointment, no more than two members can be adherents to the same political party. This is the only commission, I believe that I'm aware of, where there is a political party component of to it that is applicable. This is the only one. So this next section, what we're doing now is just deleting and repealing from our code the provision that we had that applied to the Civil Service Commission of the Fire Department. So it's no longer applicable to us since we now have a RFA. This next section here deals with the Human Services Commission specifically. This is the same reference back to that general chapter of 2.50 that just says those provisions are going to apply to the Human Services Commission. Here, what all of this language that is struck through, it is now no longer needed because we've adopted the general provision in 2.50. So in the Human Services Commission, we had created an alternate member position. We don't need to set that out here because we've already covered it in the general code, so I'm just deleting it out. Here, what we've done, because this code does specifically call out for later on in one of the sections about the council president appointing a council representative, and then also the youth representative, because it was here, I've just moved it up to this first sentence to make it fit a little bit better. And then again, just because of what we've done in that general chapter about the youth representative, I've added here that to the extent reasonably practicable, a youth representative will be appointed as provided for in that general provision. So again, here, these changes are just again to add that qualification to the extent reasonably practical. This is due to the difficulty sometimes in obtaining a youth representative, and so we're just trying to not make it a position that's absolutely mandatory. If it cannot reasonably be filled, then they do have the discretion under that general code provision to appoint somebody else to fill that spot. And these deletions here again are all because we've now adopted general provisions to deal with how meetings are going to be organized and conducted. And again, dealing more with the vacancies and what happens with an alternate position. And so if I'm going through any of this too fast, please stop me. And all of the text here that's unchanged is just I'm leaving it exactly as it is in the existing code, and so we're not making any change to it. I've tried to keep the changes to a minimum if possible. So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, here, this is one of those where it is council alone that retains that appointive authority, and so that is continued to be retained here in this code. It's not delegating it to anybody else. It just refers back again to that general chapter 2.50 to say that those provisions are also going to apply to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Here, this is language, what's noted here in green, if it shows up as green on your screen, is language that was later down in the chapter. I'm just removing, cutting, pasting basically into another section where it feels, seems more appropriate. And this is a statutory requirement that says city council is required to review the membership of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee at least once a year, and to make changes as appropriate. So those changes I anticipate could be to increase or to decrease the size of the committee possibly, just kind of dealing with whatever facts and circumstances might arise in their work. Here, it says that although all of the appointments are going to be made by you, council, you still, in seeking appointees for those positions, will follow the same recruitment process that you've outlined in chapter 2.50. So it's basically just providing that you're going to follow the same process that the mayor follows with her appointments. And here, this is a specific section that's required under state law. It just says that organizations who represent businesses that collect the tax administered by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and those who receive funding from that tax, they do have the opportunity to make recommendations for memberships on the committee. And so that is a statutory requirement where those recommendations can be made to you as to individuals who they recommend serve on the committee. You are not required to follow those recommendations, just to make that clear. And this here is just language, again, that is being stricken because we've addressed it in the general code provision in 2.50. Or what's noted here in green, I've merely cut and pasted it earlier up in the chapter. So this is the Disability Board that we've talked a lot about. This is the left one disability board that it's referring to. So this does deal with both firefighters and law enforcement officers. Here, again, I've just referred back to the general chapter 2.50. This language I've added here, you will see it on my screen. You will not see it on your version. It's one thing that I caught today when I was going through the ordinance in preparation for tonight. There is this language that should have been added to make it clear that for this membership, the individuals who actually get to elect the members are those who are subject to the jurisdiction of the board. So even though a firefighter or a law enforcement officer can serve on the board, that may not receive benefits under it. Only those who actually receive those benefits are the ones that can actually vote to elect them onto the board. I hope that makes sense. But only those who actually receive the benefits get to choose who gets to be on that board to represent them. Here, this one, I've just struck in this through in light of the conversation we had at our last meeting, which was that initially, the proposition to council was that term limits would not apply to this board. I've struck in that through. They will apply to this board based on your instruction. And then down here, again, these rules and regulations, I just struck this out because it's already now covered under the general provisions in chapter 2.50. Cultural Communities Board, again, most of the changes here are just to make them consistent. Again, I've referred back to chapter 2.50 as providing those general provisions that are going to apply to this board as well. And then down here, these changes I've just made to make them consistent with what we've done before, which is that the youth representative, we're going to fill it to the extent that it's reasonably practicable. And then just struck out provisions that are no longer necessary because they're addressed under that general chapter. Here, there is one change that we're suggesting to council, which is right now, the terms of appointment, each individual only serves a one-year term on the Cultural Communities Board. Staff is recommending that council increase that service up to two years. And because of that two years, then what we've indicated here is that just like we have under that general provision, is that if we are not able to find anybody able to serve, and somebody has already served for a total of six years, they can continue to serve if there's nobody else to fill it, or if they've had a gap in service. So it's, it's made the provision generally be the same as what's in 2.50, but we had to put it here just because we're changing the term to two years instead of the general three years that's under the, the general provisions in 2.50.
Doesn't make sense.
Does it make, okay, good. I hope so. Then these other sections here, just deleting them out because they're not necessary, because we've now addressed them in 2.50. It's just referring to the staff to support the commission. How meetings are to occur, all of that is going to be addressed in 2.50, as well as attendance of meetings and then vacancies and positions. So Land Use and Planning Board, much of the same as I've already referred to, we're just referring back to chapter 2.50, which is the general provision. Here, there is one provision that was specific to the Land Use and Planning Board. This, I believe, is, yes, it's in existing text. It's in 2.57020 subsection E right now. So I've moved it up here. This says that representatives on the Land Use and Planning Board are to be residents of Kent. But when making the appointments, the mayor shall consider appointments from residents residing at different locations within the city. So this is sort of one additional consideration that is specific to the Land Use and Planning Board. So that is what's in existing code now. I assumed council wanted to keep it. So that's why I moved it up here. But because I moved it, it does show it as new text.
Councilmember Fincher, do you have a question?
I do. I thought Councilmember Thomas had his hand up.
So I could wait till the end of the presentation, though, if you don't mind.
Okay. Since that's residence only, I think that if you own property in Kent, whether it be a business or a residence, you should be able to be a member of the Land Use and Planning Board. So I think that we should add, or not add, but make maybe two of those positions that can be landowners or property owners in Kent, property not land.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Right now, it says you have to reside in Kent. But we have people who may own a business or a home in Kent. They may not reside here, but they still maybe come into Kent to work every day, or they have property that they're taking care of here. I think that if they're here in the city, you know, it could be somebody who works here. Well, no, they, I would say that they have to be a property owner because then they have a vested interest in what happens and what goes on here in the city, and especially concerning land use and planning. So I would say that we make it five residents and two prop, two property owners. That could be business or residence.
I don't have an issue with that again. So we got to be the living Kent or have a business in Kent. So the people there, for the business side, there'd be two spots for those who have a business in Kent, what you're saying. I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I'm okay. I think we add a lot of complexity to this here, but I won't down my sword for this here. I'll leave it like that.
May I interrupt, Madam Chair, Madam President?
Go ahead, Councilmember Thomas.
I'm just thinking out loud on this one. If I own land in Kent, and I got myself on the land use committee, would I be kind of, uh, that's the word I'm looking for. Not, not fair. No, that's not right either. By just having the right.
Impartial, were you trying to say?
Yeah, but also you're kind of favoring your own opportunities. You're kind of opportunistic by, suppose.
Like a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the word. So I'm kind of struggling with this one, to be honest with you. So I'd almost, right now, I'd just soon leave it the way that she's got it.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Go ahead, Councilmember Fincher.
And I was looking at it because as a business owner, you're going to bring information that you don't have as a resident. As a resident, you're going to be looking at it differently from the, from the business owners. So I see it as making it, as getting both opinions in there so that we have input from both sections of the community that we represent.
Councilmember Fincher, how will you handle, let's say that I have a, quote, business in Kent, and I live in California. And I see a bill on this committee?
No, I would think that you still have to, that you have to be here working at your business in Kent because you have to know what's going on here in Kent. I would not say that that's good enough. So you have to be coming into the city and, and I realize we do a lot of things remotely, but no, I would say you have to be coming into the city regularly because you have to have a good handle on what's going on here in Kent so that you also see this, the other side, in this case, the side of the residents. You see the graffiti, you see the parks, you see whatever it is.
All I want to say, I hear what you're saying, but I know there's lots of people who own a business in Kent, and that business is ran by the general manager, and they don't live in Kent, and they live in California, right? So I just think, you know, you, uh, and trying to enforce that is going to be really, really hard, right? Versus I know, you're a resident in Kent. I can look that up and I can back that up. I can have a business and I live in California, and that business will stream me well. It's been well-built, well-maintained, and I don't have to show up for years. And I don't know how you would enforce that. That's my only concern, but what you're trying to say.
Tammy, has this ever been an issue or concern that's come up with this particular board that you're aware of?
You mean having a business owner who does not reside in Kent?
Well, or having someone bring up that, that thought process of, well, I own this business, but I live in, you know, Seattle or whatever. I mean, have we ever had, felt like this has come up and been a conflict or an issue that we've had to make a change?
Well, it'd only be an express conflict if, you know, say the Land Use and Planning Board were considering a quasi judicial issue, then they would have to, you know, make some concessions or identify what their conflicts would be, or they would be unable to take some action, like on a rezon type matter or not. Now, I think Kurt Hanson might be on this call. He might have more experience specifically with something that might have been raised before the Land Use and Planning Board or with E C D staff.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Are we talking about owning a business? Or owning a parcel of land on which you operate a business? Because I want to be clear, that's two different things. There's a lot of business owners in Kent that lease their location. So what are we talking about? Parcel owners or business owners?
I was thinking parcel, well, I was thinking businesses. So that if you own the land, but I would also say that you have to be here, one, you're going to be making the meetings for the land use and and planning meeting. But I would not want somebody who was living overseas, living in California. I would want somebody who has an active interest. And by that, not just the general managers running it, and I'm just collecting the, the money. I would want it so that the person has to be able, they own the, the land that the building is sitting on. They have their business here. And because of that, they are interested in the land use here, just like the residents are interested in the land use here.
I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Fincher, but that's so subjective. How will you enforce that? How will you know that that would occur? That's what I'm struggling. I hear what you're saying. I understand it, but there's no way that the land planning use is going to know that. You're not going to be able to enforce that. And that's where I'm struggling at.
I feel like we're trying to fix an issue here that isn't necessarily.
Madam President?
I'm going to go with hands raised at this point because I want to make sure. And you can comment on this as it comes to you. But Councilmember Larmor, you had your hand up. So did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, so I, I'd wanted to ask that clarifying question, but then I also wanted to say that I don't. I feel if we're talking about actual parcel ownership and operating a business parcel, I, I feel like maybe that, that pool of actual parcel business owners is too small. And then I think we get into the whole like, well, I own the business, but I lease the land. Don't I have a say? I just, I feel like unfortunately, because of the issue of actual parcel ownership on this versus parcel, you're leasing your business location. I just think it's overly complex, and I would prefer we just keep it to residents.
Yep, I agree.
All right, Councilmember Michelle, followed by Corinne Thomas.
I agree with Councilmember Larmor. I prefer to leave it the way it is. There are real concern about potentially allowing developers to be on the land use and planning board.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Larmor and Councilwoman Michelle, because it would be so hard to enforce that. I mean, like Councilmember Boyce was saying, that how would we know? You know, it would be hard for staff to even figure out who should be on the board and who shouldn't. So I think I'm okay with leaving it for residents for now. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Thomas, followed by Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm glad that Councilmember, uh, yeah, Michelle, you know, mentioned about the difference between ownership of land and business owner because there's, that was what I was worried about. If it was a land developer, I wouldn't want him on the land use. That's too much the conflict of interest. Business owner, that's different. For example, you don't know Gary Heather, but he used to own the Ben Franklin store in Kent, and he lived in Black Diamond. No. No reason why he couldn't do it. Mark Scarf owns, you know, the Scarf Ford. He lives, I believe, out in Covington. So why couldn't he be on it? I, you know, this, so it's kind of like what Councilmember Fincher started out with, you know, just going with the business owners and residents, not necessarily these out-of-town developers.
All right, Councilmember Fincher.
And that, that is fine, because what I'm looking at is you're paying, you're supporting Kent when you do that. And I definitely agree, you know, and I, I don't want developers on the land use and planning commission either, especially in multiple numbers. But if you are paying into the city and you have, you bring different knowledge than possibly the, the other side, whether that be the residential side or the business side, I think that again, we have a more even plan. And I would like to at least see, is there a way that we can do this? I don't know, maybe, does, do you know of other cities? Kurt, did you have any input into this as if, you know, in, in the other areas around, is it always only residents? You know, to me, it just seems like we're missing part of the pie when we lock out part of the community.
Council President, if I may, you guys are on, on a great point here. And I think the way it's kind of settled out is the way that I think it should stay as residents. Councilmember Fincher, I am not aware of specific examples of surrounding cities where they have either business interest or maybe property, you know, ownership allowed in that don't reside in the city. I guess what I would offer, and obviously council is aware of this, but our Land Use and Planning Board members themselves, you know, we have very active, I guess, volunteer folks that are willing to commit their time and energy into pretty valuable process for us. Some of those members, of course, own businesses in. Some of those members, of course, own businesses in Kent. And so I think a twist on this is the way we have, uh, as Tammy has proposed it, the way it exists with the appointments is you could have staff. And I guess as the director of that division, that department, I would go out and, you know, our goal would be to find residents that may have a business interest in Kent. And so we could do that to fill future vacancies. That could be of interest for a certain number of spots where we, we try and, and accomplish that. I do believe residents of Kent is the way to keep it because having a development interest in there when we're contemplating things like, you know, land use changes or zoning changes where you're talking about densities or uses, there's too much, um, too much opportunity for that to go sideways. So, uh, I think that the way it's being proposed here this evening is the way that it just needs to stay to be manageable for the future.
Okay. And I was not thinking of the resident also being a business owner. It's a good point.
Thank you, Kurt, for sharing that information. Councilmember, um, let's see, Councilmember Thomas, did you have anything else?
No, I'm done, I'm sorry.
All right, Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah, just one correction for Councilmember Thomas. Uh, Scarf, Mark Scarf live in Kent, not in Covington, just. Secondly, and secondly, I just agree with Kurt. You know, I just think, you know, I, I know what we're trying to do. But also I think sometimes we just add too much complexity to this year, right? And I just, we cannot reinvent this thing overnight. And I think there's some thing that been in place for years that kind of work. And I'm okay with a few tweaks in here and there. But I just, you know, if it's, Councilmember Thomas, you said it before, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And as we, and I, Councilmember Thomas, Brooke Fincher, a lot of respect for you. And I hear what you're saying. I just think so many things, it get to be too complex. And I think about staff and their time trying to check the box, who fits in, who fits there. It just get to be too much and, and that's where I'm coming from. So I have a lot of respect for what you're trying to do and what you say. So thank you.
And Kurt brought up a good point. So both sides can, well, and probably are really already represented.
I'm, I'm okay as is.
So are we okay moving on then? All right. Well, thank you very much for that conversation. Tammy, I think we can move forward.
Okay. So I'm going to move on down these next sections again. I've deleted them because we've addressed them in our general chapter 2.50 and it's not needed to address it here under the land use and planning board. This is a section here that was talking about dismissing members if they missed a certain amount of meetings. And we've agreed under 2.50 to deal with all of removals from commissions in one section. And so we've listed that there, which this would fall under like the neglect of duty provision. Other provisions here dealing with organization meetings and rules, we've addressed it under 2.50. Here is just sort of a holdover correction. Many years ago, uh, we had revised the name of the, I think it used to be the planning department. Now it's the economic and community development department. And so this is a change just to make that correction. And then the next section deals with the Valley Independent Investigative Team. This is a new chapter, so you have not seen this language. What it does is it is incorporating and existing in our local agreement and Washington Administrative Code regulations by the Criminal Justice Training Commission, as well as operation policies established by the Valley Investigative Team. So all of those provisions together sort of deal with how we have community member appointments on there. What we've done in this chapter, what I'm proposing to you is a provision that is more general. It makes reference back to the administrative regulations that exist now in chapter 139. And it leaves open the potential that there are going to be changes in the future. As you know, there was a lot of significant legislation that passed out of the state legislature this year. Because of that legislation, we are fully expecting additional changes under administrative regulations that the Criminal Justice Training Commission will adopt. Our concern in being too specific here in chapter 2.58 is I'm going to be back before you in a number of months with additional changes that we may need to make to be consistent with state regulations. So I'm going to go through what I have proposed here. They're very general provisions. I put in our comments some of the more details as to what our current interlocal agreement with VIT provides for. And we can kind of get into some discussion there. And if need be, um, the chief should be on the call and can also chime in if you have specific operational questions. So this first section here just, it sort of explains what VIT is, why it's formed and how it operates. So under state law or state regulations, uh, VIT is created in order to investigate police deadly force incidents. We have expanded upon what their duties and operations will be through the interlocal agreement and the operational policies. So through those policies and the agreements, uh, VIT will also investigate officer involved uses of deadly force that result in deaths, substantial bodily harm or great bodily harm. They will also investigate in custody deaths or life threatening injuries, as well as death or life threatening injuries of a police employee and also all other matters that the VIT executive board may direct. So we do go broader, um, above and beyond what state law currently requires. But we've not wanted to put these provisions into code in the event additional changes happen in the future. So this next section, 2.58020, talks about the community representatives that serve with VIT. And so this is a new provision, I want to say happened in early this year. I believe some of the appointments came before council for confirmation. Uh, there is provisions dealt with in the WAC that says these community members are to have credibility with and ties to the communities impacted by police use of deadly force. And they must agree to sign a confidentiality agreement. So these are the two qualification requirements that state law currently provides for. This, then, the duties, again, I've kept this very general just because we do anticipate change. So it provides that the duties of these community members is going to be as defined in chapter 139-12 of the Washington Administrative Code, as well as VIT's organizational and operational guidelines. I've put over here in a comment, the duties that we've actually spelled out in those documents or are spelled out in those documents. So it provides here that they will assist VIT in the selection of law enforcement investigators who are assigned to VIT after January of 2021. They will help complete a conflict of interest statement within 72 hours of referral of an incident to VIT for investigation. They will assist with the review of conflict of interest statements submitted within 72 hours of the commencement of an investigation by VIT. They will be present at briefings with an involved agency's police chief. They will have access to and review of the VIT investigative file. They will be provided with a copy of all press releases and communications to the media prior to release. And they will review notifications of equipment used, um, by the involved agency. And so, Madam President, I'm just going to go on until I see any hands up where you stop me. So this next section talks about how, uh, appointments are going to be made of the non-law enforcement community representatives to serve VIT. So again, this provides through the WAC, um, and that WAC provides that the independent investigative team shall include at least two non-law enforcement community representatives. So under state law, the entire, uh, team needs to include two community members. VIT has gone above and beyond that. So under the mutual aid agreement, that is in effect between, uh, VIT and each member agency. Each agency may appoint one or more law enforcement community representatives. Kent, in fact, has two currently appointed to this team. And so this section leaves it open that the number of community representatives appointed to each jurisdiction and selected will be at the police chief and the VIT executive board's discretion. Again, they've exercised discretion to create, um, an increase in the number of community representatives. So I think there are a number of, of members that are on the entire team as a whole. Uh, this next section about how these individuals are going to be solicited for appointment, it refers back again to chapter 2.50 and indicates that the solicitation process used by the chief is going to further those goals that council has expressed. And again, just over here in a comment, I've outlined what you've, what you've indicated to me was what you hoped to accomplish through this ordinance is that it will produce a diverse applicant pool that reflects the community, that it balances, uh, experience with new voices and fresh perspectives and that it sufficiently informs the public of the available opportunity. Uh, also indicates how these appointments are going to be finalized. So there will be a recommendation by the chief. The mayor will then make the appointments and the council will confirm them. And so this is the process that was utilized for this current, um, these current appointments on this board. And then also how all of the other appointments to each of the other boards are made by, uh, mayor recommendation and council confirmation. And then the term, this part here is left open, that it's going to be as the law provides or as the operational policies and procedures provide. That, I can't remember what they, I don't know that the term is expressly called out for the current appointments. But this just leaves it open to determine as, uh, those laws get revised and then as the operational policies kind of get carried out.
So Tammy, for right now, so the two that we have on this committee, get back to that session you just left from, that's the only thing. So as far as their term, are we waiting on some of the bills from, from Olympia to help us determine that?
Um, I, I believe under, I was, I had a comment on here. I actually thought they were serving a two or a three year term. I believe the operational policies may provide for that. I just don't have that at the ready. Councilmember Boyce, I can follow up with that and get back to you on that to all of the councils.
Okay, that, that's good. I like what it said. I guess the only thing is that, you know, it's too bad that, you know, you got two coming at the same time and two leaving at the same time, right? So I don't know how, because there's a lot of knowledge transfer. It would be nice if it could be, you know, alternate type, you know, you know, but I don't know if that's possible. But, uh, other than that, I like what you have and that's something I can live with.
Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. Uh, Tammy, so do we have like a date that we will be coming back to revisit these? Um, I'm okay leaving them vague right now, but do we know that by X date, you know, we'll need to codify these because, because I'm just a little uncomfortable with open ended nature.
And I see that the chief has his hand up. I don't know if he has, uh, information at the ready as to when the current community members' term ends. But that, that would be one time in which we could revisit it or we could certainly put it on the calendar to revisit it in six months to see if there's been some changes.
Yeah, thank you, Tammy. We want to double check this. I actually don't think the statute set term limits for the, the non-law enforcement. So that is something that I think to your point earlier, Tammy, there, the training commission is reentering another round of rulesmaking that's comprised of community input, um, commission stakeholders at the CJTC and then law enforcement. And so Tammy is correct in that they put together, I-940 was put together, but in, in all honesty, it was put together pretty quickly. And so they're realizing there were some short, uh, coming in that, that issues like term limits for non-law enforcement members and other things. The other thing I want to say is that we're also in a little bit of an interesting situation in that the new law that came out develops an independent state, independent investigation team. And so as that develops, we may, um, find ourselves in a position where we may not utilize VIT in some circumstances at the attorney general's discretion, right? And I know for sure they haven't even begun looking at, in what circumstances are they going to step in versus having the local authority step in? So there's lots of moving pieces to this. So, and the last thing I want to add is as we're waiting for the rules to come out, this is unlike all the other boards in a couple of situations, um, a couple of ways. Number one, hopefully they never have to exercise any of their skills to do this, right? And so there isn't a set business schedule, if you will. There isn't a business routine. This happens as incidents occur and I'm sure they will occur. But for instance, in the year that we've had this up now, um, we've had two occasions to bring them in on investigations. And so, you know, there's been years where we haven't had any, uh, officer involved shootings and there's been years where we've had multiple. So it's not one of those where there's a routine. And I say that to say there's a lot of training and technical specifics to go into getting our members up to speed for this job. It's a lot more technical than probably most any of the other boards we have. So with that, their tenure is important in terms of, um, sustainability in terms of consistency and all of that. So just some things to consider when we, when we get closer to defining terms.
Councilmember Fincher.
Can we just scroll back up please, Tammy? To the, uh, part that spelled out how many would be in there?
Let's see. So right now it's open. It says, so the entire, um, investigative team shall include at least two law enforcement community representatives. And so then under the agreement, it's each agency may appoint one or more. So it's sort of open ended as to how many could be appointed.
Okay, thank you. And to Councilmember Boyce's place, Chief, at one point you were, you were, um, hoping for three members. So if there was a third one appointed, that could help fill that gap. So everybody, that we don't have both the people with the knowledge rotating off at the same time. So that could almost be, you know, by design so that you do have carryover between the terms.
Agreed. And we did have a third, and if, just for, uh, historical reference, we went out twice. We went out to the cultural community boards and the race and equity board. You guys were, some of you were on those, on my pleads to the group. It's, it takes a lot of commitment to want to get woken up at three o'clock in the morning at any random point, right? So this is, like I said, a lot different than some of our boards, not a regular schedule. But yeah, I would welcome a third member on here if we could find someone.
And I would propose that, uh, uh, that if we get that third one, let's wait a year out and that could help with the rotation, right? So you bring a third one out and that doesn't solve the problem, right? So let's wait a year and then they help with the rotation once we determine the link of the time. Just my thoughts.
Makes sense.
And, and one thing I could add in here, um, I could indicate some preference for staggering or, um, you know, kind of refer back to that section. So I think I could do something general that, you know, doesn't change the current appointment of the two members, but at least we'll have something in that, uh, Councilmember Boyce will address your concern, uh, in the future.
Sounds good.
And if I could make one more point. So collectively, the team is now representing, I think it's up to 12 South King County agencies. Amongst the 12, there's probably close to 16 or 17 law enforcement reps now. So we have built in redundancy and if like the worst case scenario happened and we couldn't get ahold of either of our two Kent specific reps, we would call upon either the Renton rep or the Auburn rep or someone locally that would represent us in the pitch. And then get the others on board when they got back from wherever they were. So there are some, there's some overlap there and there are multiple. I think it is 16 members on the, uh, non-law enforcement on the team now.
Okay.
Tammy, just kind of to see where we are on time, um, because I've been kind of watching the clock. I know we've got this section, but then after this, we've got several other sections to get through. So do you think we can get through those quickly? Or do you think that we need to pick a point and, um, wait until next time to revisit?
So I thought, you know, VIT is really the one I thought we'd have some discussion on. The rest I don't think honestly, there's going to be much issue with. The biggest issue, um, might be this effective date piece. So I don't know if you just want to have that discussion now and, and deal with the most difficult one now or just go through the rest of the ordinance and then we can reevaluate once we get down to the effective date.
Uh, Councilmember President, I, I need to drop off. So feel free to move forward if you like, uh, but, uh, I'm going to have to drop off at this time here.
All right, let's, if everyone is okay, is everyone just okay to keep moving forward a little bit farther? And maybe if we can kind of get through this and come to some conclusion of, um, where we want to move forward, that might be a great idea at this point.
I agree. Let's just power through.
Okay. I, I do think the rest of this should go fairly quick. Uh, so this next section here deals with the RFA. Most of this, this is all just housekeeping information. So they changed their name in 2017, but our code was still referring to them under their old name. So these changes are now just to update it to the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governing Board. Just indicated that in 2017, that is when their name changed. Just now, again, referring to the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Terms of appointment, again, just not necessary since this is already established to carry over this initial term, staggering term. It's already set, so as those positions come up for reappointment, the staggering is already in effect. No changes made other than to the name. Parks and Recreation Commission, again, all of the changes here are just for consistency with this new chapter 2.50. Again, that's just refers back to those general provisions and those are going to apply to this commission as well. Just deleting out of here all of the information which is now redundant because we've now addressed it in 2.50. So dealing with alternate members, um, how the members are appointed, their terms of office, all that is now covered under 2.50. Same here, this was just dealing with the terms of office. And when a vacancy occurs, how that vacancy is going to be filled, this is all now set forth in 2.50. So this residency requirement, um, this just restates what was in the general code, but also indicates, um, this, to the extent reasonably practicable, that the appointments will reflect the balance of the diversity of users of and interest in Kent's parks and recreation services. So this is slightly different. This is looking at our parks users and making sure that the individuals that serve this park commission kind of make up, um, the full majority of those users. So that just kind of reflects the same sort of balance that you're looking to do community wide as well. These removal provisions about how These removal provisions about how a member may be removed, those are now covered under the 2.50. Their organization and meetings, how officers are elected, when they meet, their rules, all of this is now set out in 2.50. The rest of this is just unchanged. These are all dealing with their duties, and so what the issues are that are going to come before the board. The next section deals with the Arts Commission. Again, this refers back to the general provisions of 2.50. The membership here, these now, these provisions are dealt with under 2.50, dealing with the alternate position. Terms of appointment, so this is one issue that we talked about in one of our prior meetings, is that the current term for the Arts Commission is four years. Staff is requesting that council keep that term at four years. Term limits would still apply, so they would have two four-year terms, allowing them to serve for a total of eight years. Here again, we're just deleting out the provisions that deal with officers and meetings, because those are now covered under chapter 2.50. Same with the rules and the bylaws and keeping of minutes, those are all now covered by chapter 2.50. Kent Bicycle Advisory Board, this again refers back to the general provisions in 2.50 and deletes all of the duplicative provisions that are no longer needed. So terms of office, when the terms come up, how vacancies are filled. So this here is just revising kind of the duties and responsibilities. I've changed the introduction. And then I've out, just kind of kept consistently all of the duties that they did, just changed the verbiage so that it flows and is consistent. The PFD, so the PFD is a unique one. This section is pretty much prescribed by the inter-local agreement that the city has with the Public Facilities District, and also a prior ordinance that council adopted that created the PFD. But the PFD is a separate and independent municipal organization, and so we're limited in the ways in which we can actually manage its affairs. So while we can deal with how the board members are appointed and how we're soliciting individuals from that pool to appoint from, we're really limited in our in our ability to sort of dictate how it is that they conduct their business. So this section is a little bit different than the ones that you've seen with some of the other boards and commissions. So what I've done here is just sort of restated how it was that the board is created, referring back to the prior ordinance that was adopted in 2007, and also referencing the inter-local agreement that we have between the City of Kent and the PFD. And so again, this here too just states the independent authority that the PFD has, indicates that for those reasons, chapter 2.50 will not apply to these individuals other than the recruitment efforts that the mayor undertakes in order to find a relevant pool to appoint board members. So state law also limits how or what type of individuals can be considered for appointment. So under state law, you can appoint two directors without any restriction. So it doesn't matter where in Kent they live, or who they work for, or what they do. Three directors, though, you must appoint based on recommendations received from local organizations. That include the local Chamber of Commerce, the local Economic Development Council, and the local Labor Council. So three of those appointments need to be based on those recommendations. And under state law, directors are able to serve four-year terms. Oh, and this is a holdover I need to delete out. So this was, again, a prior discussion we had about term limits, and there was a proposition to exclude the PFD members. I'm going to now delete this from the ordinance, so it will not apply. And all of this existing text here just refers back to who serves as the treasurer and the staff appointment to assist. These are all provisions that are already set out, either in that prior ordinance that council adopted in 2007, or from the signed inter-local agreement between the city and the PFD. So this indicates also that the PFD will adopt its bylaws. They already have existing bylaws that are in effect. We're just limited in our ability to sort of dictate those bylaws or how it is that they conduct their business.
And Tammy, this is a committee that's appointed by council, not by the mayor, is that correct?
Correct, yes. So this appointment it is. So this appointment authority rests entirely with council unless you chose through this ordinance to delegate it to the mayor or to somebody else. But yes, this authority rests entirely with the council. Council is also the one who would remove, or if there, you know, was a need to remove a board or director for some misconduct, that would all be done through council as well. So the next section, interestingly enough, this is probably one of the oldest boards that we have, but was never reduced to an ordinance. So when I was preparing this ordinance for you, I had a heck of a time trying to find the provisions that apply to the Fireman's Relief and Pension Board. And so this is a board, as we've discussed before, was in existence long before the state created its retirement system. And so now what I've set out in here is just kind of a placeholder in code, where now we're not going to forget that we have this code. It sort of outlines how it is that these members are to be selected. All of this comes from state law or existing provisions. So these membership provisions here, this is set out entirely by state law. The membership of the Fireman's Relief and Pension Board includes the mayor, the city clerk, one of the council members who is appointed by the council president, and it also includes two firefighters that are elected by secret ballot by the members who receive the benefits from the board. And then those two firefighters select an alternate to serve. So again, these are provisions that are set out in state law. I've just restated them here into our code. Again, down here, initially, their proposition to council was that we not have term limits apply. I have deleted that proposition from here, so it will not be in the final ordinance that's presented to you. Term limits will apply to these individuals. And again, if for some reason we're not able to find members to serve, then we can open it up and allow other firefighters to serve on this. And they can either, they do not have to be firefighters from Kent. They can, they have to live in Kent, but they can be from Seattle, Bellevue, RFA. This is all a provision of state law, just knowing that some of these individuals are going to age out and unfortunately pass away, and there's still going to be business that needs to get done.
Councilmember Thomas.
I could wait till the end of the presentation. Thank you.
I'm almost there. Hang in there. I'm getting there. Last section, this just sort of refers over to officers and how it is that they're going to be appointed, a chair for town, a secretary, their meetings. This all comes from state law, so it's just restating it here into our ordinance. And now with that, believe it or not, I am to the very end. So then the last section to deal with is this effective date language, and I know based on other conversations we had at prior meetings, this might be a section that council wishes to talk about. So I don't know if you wish to do it tonight or reserve that for another meeting.
All right, Councilmember Thomas, go ahead with your question and comment.
Tammy, let's go back to something, oh, thank you, Madam President. Let's go back to the Civil Service Commissioners. I think you said, if I heard you right, that they must declare their political bias or
Their political party, it's a provision that's under state law. So it says at the time of any appointment, not more than two members shall be adherents of the same political party. And that's just a provision that's set out in RCW 411203.
So you have three members. It's going to, somebody's going to have two members, aren't you?
Yeah, so it says no more than two. So theoretically, all three, yeah, all three can't be of the same political party.
I do not remember my wife being asked that, but I'll have to ask her.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that happens in practice. HR might be able to shed some light on that, but yeah, I thought that was interesting when I saw that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, so going back to the end of this, we're at that portion where we need to decide when we need this to go into effect. So what are thoughts on this?
Tomorrow.
Do you want me to give a recap, Madam President, as to if you did nothing other than follow the language here, what would happen? So ordinances apply prospectively, so moving forward. So if we left this language as is, the provisions set out in this ordinance would apply 30 days after passage. So it does kind of leave an open question as to when you've set up these term limits, what is going to apply? How are those term limits going to be applied? So there's a couple of ways to do it. One, you could expressly call out in here that it's not going to apply to current terms, it will apply to future terms. And then it would, you know, allow current members to maybe serve two more full terms. Or you could indicate that this ordinance will apply retroactively with respect to term limits. And so if a member has already served two full terms, they will be excluded from serving a future term, or you could kind of do somewhere, some meat in the middle. So you have some options there. It's just if you want to do something other than, you know, leaving it open-ended like this, you should give some further clarification.
Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. So my suggestion would be to kind of meet in the middle. I'm not, I don't personally like the idea of it being a go-forward, because then you have people who have been serving for years and then could potentially get another six years or more, depending if they get two more full terms. And that kind of, to me, seems to defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do, and it's in obtaining that balance between experience and new perspectives. So I would like to propose that we make it retroactive, but can we, is there a way to make it retroactive to count for one term instead of, you know, counting two terms? I'm just, as a way to meet in the middle on this issue.
So what I could, I, you know, have to, of course, make the language better than what I'm proposing here, but I could say something that it will apply to the term a member is currently serving, something along those, so that, you know, the term that they're currently serving will be the first term, and then it would allow for one additional term.
So are you saying, so going forward, because I'm okay saying that, you know, you continue out your term, and then these would apply to you. So is that what you're saying, Councilmember Larmour? Or are you saying that if people are, if it's a two-term?
So what I'm trying to avoid is, is they get two more terms in addition to what they've served already. Which, if I understand, Tammy, if we were to not change the language, that would, would be what would happen. If you've served 10, 12 years, you'll get another, you know, six to 12, depending on the
If you're in the middle of your term, correct?
I think it leaves the door a little open for a potential interpretation that way. You know, another way that you could clarify through it is that, you know, it goes into effect 30 days after it's passed. So if somebody is in the middle of, or currently serving a term, these provisions now would apply to that current term. So it wouldn't apply to any past one, so they would get their current term plus one more term, whether that term is two years, three years, four years, however we've defined it in the ordinance. So I think that's what Council Larmour is asking for, is that what they're serving now would count, but then they would still be entitled to one additional full term. I think that's what I was, that's how I was interpreting Council Larmour.
Yeah, that's what I was offering as a, as a sort of a compromise.
All right, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you. Whatever Tammy just said, I agree with that. That makes sense.
So I need to, I need to work on the language, but the final version I would have to, I would have it highlighted so you could clearly see what I'm proposing.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. So if I just heard Tammy right, she's got some more revisions to make. So if we did another workshop, I mean, I could, I could almost vote on this July 6th, but if we had to wait till the 13th, that'd be okay with me. Or what would that be? 6, 4, 20th, I guess it'd be July 20th.
Well, and that is something that we can discuss here at this point. I think we've all gone through this document. I don't know that there's necessarily any big changes or changes that Tammy has to make at this point, aside from us just deciding when we want this to go into effect, that technically we can choose to move this forward to the next council meeting if we would like to say that we've made it through and we are ready to move forward with the document.
All right.
So that's a decision that we can make as well. It's just trying to figure out when we want this to be effective.
So my input would be to move it as quickly as possible as Tammy has written it.
And Tammy, I'm okay with Councilmember Larmour's suggestion. I just want to make sure that we're not cutting anybody short on a regular
Yeah, I'm a little concerned there.
But as long as everyone else, you know, I mean, I'm willing to compromise at that point. So, Councilmember Larmour.
Well, you know, if, if everybody is, you know, perhaps we don't need the compromise, maybe I jump again there. And if everybody wants to just put it into play 30 days ahead, my only concern might be with that, what does that do to staff? It's suddenly a lot of terms ending.
And I think that could, I think that could be a concern of some staff members, but I don't have any of the data to know, you know, when terms are coming up or how that would impact staff. You know, depending upon what you decide to do with this, that's information I could try to gather from some of the departments that staff these commissions, and maybe put it in a summary statement that follows this in your council packet, so you have some of that information. That's another way to get the information to you, or separately email you, you know, as I get that from the committees.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm willing to, you know, say that the term you're serving is your last term. If, you know.
Or first term.
But I thought I heard, okay, maybe I'm getting confused, because I thought I, what I was hearing is that you were as far okay with it being their services end if they've, if they've served six years, then they're done.
Well, based on into this ordinance. So if we say that this goes into effect for 30 days, and someone still has two years left in their six years, then they would get to continue those two years.
Correct.
No, I want them to be able to continue their current term. I don't want them to get six to nine more years after the current term.
And I think the way that this is written, they would have, it would have to go back to the appointment process. Is that correct, Tammy?
So I've heard kind of a couple of different things. So one part is if we do nothing with this ordinance, then the potential exists that it could be interpreted as allowing two full additional terms. One of the discussions that we had talked about, and it seemed like there may be consensus, is that this would apply to the current term they're serving, and then allow one full additional term. So they could get whatever there is left of their current term, plus an additional three years, or four years or two years, depending upon however that specific commission, what that term length is. Or if you wanted, you could apply this retroactively, which is that it would apply to all prior years and prohibit any additional years if they had already served two full terms.
So I like your first option. That's my choice. Councilmember Cor.
Yeah, the whole point of doing this exercise was to try to bring in some, you know, opening up our boards and commissions to our community members who want to serve. So I kind of don't feel okay with allowing multiple terms at this time, like, all right, I feel like we need to, this is your term, and then we need to look at maybe opening up that position, and if we don't get any individuals willing to serve, then obviously we have the option of letting them serve. But I feel like if a person's been there for like eight years or 10 years, it's, it's time we look at that and kind of open it up to our community members.
I'm good with that.
So are you saying to cut people's terms short, or are you saying let them continue their term, though?
Their current term only. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's correct. Just let them finish their current term and then have the option of opening it up. And if we don't get any community members, obviously, then we have the option of letting them continue.
Okay, I like that.
So that would be a retroactive effective date.
Yeah.
And I think that, I mean, just, just for informational purposes, I think that is what staff was most concerned about, just because most of their commissions, they would now have to deal with a fresh pool. And so the work that would go involved with doing that in short order. So I think that was most of the concern that I got from staff when we were seeking input. So just for informational purposes.
Yeah, where I'm in the consensus that I'd like to, your first suggestion that you had, Tammy, was to let them continue their term and then, and then the next term, but so if we can kind of, where are we on consensus, though?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Brenda.
So to what you just said, Tammy, seems like to me if they finish out their current terms, those are going to be finishing at different times. It's not going to be all the terms are going to end on June 18th, for instance. So it's going to be staggered when they're going to be bringing in new people.
I would assume so, but I just, I'm honestly not sure how all of the commissions are organized, you know, and when each term comes up. So the city clerk might have that information more readily available, but I don't have that information for each of the boards and commissions as to when current terms come up for renewal.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions or thoughts on this? I have concerns that it's just going to create a lot of work at one time. Anybody else have questions or thoughts on this? I have concerns that it's just going to create a lot of work at one time. You know. Trying to, to work through this process. And I also think that we have people on these boards and commissions that were under, you know. Like we talked about grandfathering them in, they're under the impression that they, you know. Have these options and have, you know, these terms to carry out, yet we're trying to.
They're going to carry out the current term. They'll, they'll finish their current term.
We're not cutting their terms short.
Yeah, we're in agreement. We're not going to cut their current term short.
Councilmember Thomas, you have your hand raised.
It brings me back to the roosters. Thank you, Madam Chair. The roosters, because it seems like we create sometimes more of a problem. Than it really is. And so. I know that some of you are concerned about, you know, people being on for a long time. Certainly. My wife has been on the civil service for, I don't know, eighteen, nineteen years. And that's a long time, but they sometimes only have two. They don't, they can't get a third person. Right now, they do have three on each of the commissions, the fire and the police. So I kind of agree with our president here that. Let them ride through their end of their term if they want to run again. Sure, why not, you know? It's not automatic is what I'm trying to say, you know, as much as. It seems like sometimes it is because sometimes these guys are on a long time. I was on the fire relief and pension fund. And Sam Grubb has been there for, I think he made that chair that he sits in. I don't know, it's a long time, so. I don't know if any of this makes sense or not, but I just think we're making too much of a big deal of practically nothing.
Councilmember Lomer, followed by Cor.
I think for simplicity sake, we just make it retroactive with the understanding that they finish their current term. And, you know, maybe we spell it out, but we're. We expect them to fulfill the current term and it's retroactive, but it's legal language to be about that. And I guess, you know, when you think about staff time in the case where these seats have gone to the same person, you know, year after year after year, and it's never been solicited, it's really, you know. It's, the staff hasn't had to do the work before. It'll be like, you know, I guess new work. So it's. And it sounds like most of them will be staggered, so. So I think the lift should be fairly reasonable.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember, just like councilmember Thomas's comment that his wife's been on that board for eighteen. Years or so, right? And we're not saying that, you know, she needs to leave that position like tomorrow. We're saying, you know, finish your term. We open up these seats for the individuals to have the opportunity to sit on these boards and commissions. That was the whole reason for. Going through this ordinance. That was the whole reason we started this process because we want to make sure. Our community members have a chance. They have an opportunity to contribute to our community. They have a voice. So we need some. You know, new voices on these boards and commissions. And I, and we're not, you know, like, I agree with councilwoman Alarmer, they need to be retrospective, but we need to make sure. We are giving chance to new members. And if we don't have anybody, we've talked about this before, it's part of this. This exercise, if we don't get new applicants, then obviously we have the option of letting this person continue. We definitely need to consider opening these up. For our new community members, for our community members who can't want to participate and be involved. That's, that's the whole reason for doing this. So I want to point that out again and that's, that's where I stand. Thank you.
But Sadwinder, if I could, Madam Chair. I know where you're coming from. The really interesting part, there's two things. One, the gentleman that works with her on civil service has actually been there longer than her. He's served a lot longer. So, and I know where you're coming from and also, yeah.
Example, since you mentioned her, I wasn't like singling.
No, I know. And keep in mind, she's not eligible because she is also, she's on one of those commissions that's not part of this, as you probably remember. You know, if I were in a city committee and I got word that I was going to be released or my term was up. That's telling me that maybe I didn't do a very good job on this committee. You know, dude, I, I might have some hurt feelings in regard to. The, the action that's being taken here. That looks like it's going through anyway.
Well, councilmember Thomas, that is, you know, some of these where we're only having two terms or, you know, I look at the parks commission, for example, and I know, Andrea, you can probably speak on this, but. You know, you've got people that now you've served your one term. And we're going to say, okay, now, sorry, we, we need to bring somebody else in where. You know, I, I don't know. I just, I feel, I feel like if I was on a board and commission right now and I was being told that. At the end of my term, I'm going to be done. Where I was kind of hoping to serve a little bit longer. I would be a little bit frustrated.
Yeah.
Worry that we're sending a message to, we have enough, hard enough time filling a lot of these boards and commissions anyway. I mean, I know that the intent is to say, hey, we need to bring in new people. We need to diversify. We need to do all of these things. But to be honest with you, a majority of these boards have vacancies because no one's applying.
Yep.
So we, we've accounted for that, but we've accounted for that situation in the ordinance in two, in two point five. We've accounted for no applicants.
But we're saying, we're saying you can't have another term. We need to let somebody apply because if they're better than you, we're going to choose them and you can't have two terms. I feel like that we're sending that message to people that. You know, you might have did a good job, but this person hasn't ever been on a board before and we, we think they could do a better job. So we're going to let them do it instead. That's. I worry that we're sending that message that. Because we're trying to, we're trying to fix something that isn't necessarily broken.
Okay, councilor Fincher's had her hand up for a while.
Thank you. And I was just going to reiterate too, it's not a guarantee we are going to get people. So if you're right and nobody applies. Then they get to stay. But, you know, for council members, there's a four year term and then you have to reapply. That's what the election process is about. You know, it, it's not saying that because you're not, that you did a bad job. It's saying that now, looking at the makeup, if I was, you were to take out a picture of all of our committees and commissions and look at them. How representative are they really of all of the folks in this city? I'm taking, you know. I, I live on West Hill. I'm a female. I'm black. I'm, you know, whatever, all of the different subcultures that make us up. There's a lot more of that now than there was ten years ago, twenty years ago. If no one applies, hopefully that person decides to stay. But maybe, maybe we can get somebody who might be just as good. Or we might get somebody who ends up getting removed from the committee. You know, if they are derelict in their duty. But what it does is open up the chance to see. Because it's somebody different on that committee with different thoughts, with different ideas, with a different background. Who can still have something very important to contribute to the city of Kent. Doesn't guarantee we're going to get any applications, but it opens up the door so we can.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. So the Parks Commission had already had term limits, so you could serve for two terms already. So I guess I need a clarification, Tammy. If we make this retroactive, doesn't that mean that if you already serve. We're going to exclude Parks Commission because they already do that. Let's say. I don't know, some other commission. If you've already served two terms, then once you are done with your current term, then you're done?
Yeah, so if you agree that you want to make the effective date retroactive. I would explicitly, you know, explain in there the term limits piece, that if a member already served two full terms. Under the term limits provision that is applicable retroactively, they would not be able to serve an additional term unless one of those exceptions apply. Which is that you can't find anybody else willing and able to serve.
Okay, so no one would be getting kicked off the commission because they've only served one term?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we've already provided that the term limits are two full terms.
Yep. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
All right, so. I know councilmember Thomas and I don't necessarily agree with this, but. Councilmember Lomer, Fincher and Cor want to go retroactive on this. Councilmember Michelle. I'm going to put you on the spot. Sorry. Just to try to see if we have consensus here.
Well, I mean. No, I don't. I guess retroactive, sure. It's not a big deal to me either way.
All right, so Tammy, you have the information on. When this should take effect. Is everyone okay then with? The discussion we've had today and with the information you have before you to move this forward to the consent calendar for the July sixth council meeting. All right, so I am seeing everyone shake their head. So I think it's fair to say that we've spent quite a bit of time on this, but we have come to the end. Tammy, thank you so much. Thank you to working with all the directors and working with Eric. Because there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought that has been put into this. And I just can't thank you enough for spending these Tuesdays with us.
Well, July sixth, I'll get to see you in person, so that'll be great. And what I will do is the language that I've created, I will highlight it so it will stand out for you so you can see the changes that were specific to the direction you gave through these meetings.
Wonderful. And then when the packet comes out, everyone just make sure you look through it and we'll be prepared to. Move this forward at our next meeting. So thank you, Tammy, very much.
Great, thank you all.
All right, that brings us to the end of this very long meeting this evening, but look forward to seeing everybody in person July sixth. We have a fifth week next week, so everybody gets to take a little break. Enjoy the sunshine this week. Take care and we will see everybody next month.
Might have to buy a new tie.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.